Ready?
I'm ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My mic on?
Is your mic on?
It's on. Do you want me to use this one?
No, I don't know.
On the screen.
Good evening, ladies— Is it on?
Test, test.
No, it's not on. You have it on?
Check.
Dean has his on. He can hear. There you go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission on October 18, 2018. Let's begin with roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Yearsley?
Here.
Commissioner Perrow?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Absent are Commissioners Cassinelli, McCarville, and Fitzgerald.
Thank you. Before we get started, we'd like to make a quick announcement regarding some of the file numbers for action items 4A, 4B, and 4C. Those were listed incorrectly on the posted agenda. The correct file numbers are 4A, Alturus Rezone. For 4A is Alturus Rezone, H2018-0105. For 4B, Del Taco is H2018-0106. And 4C, the Goddard School, is H2018-0108. So these file numbers were correct on the mailers and the published notices, but they just were incorrectly marked on the posted agenda. Okay, so next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Items 4A and B are going to be opened only for the purpose of continuing. And it looks like we have dates for both of those. They will both be continued to November 1, 2018. They'll be open solely for that purpose, so if there's anybody here tonight that is going to testify or interested in testifying, we will not be taking testimony for those particular applications until November 1. Okay, so can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, we will—the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And we have four items on the consent agenda. 3A, the approval of minutes for the meeting of October 4, 2018, for the Planning and Zoning Commission. The findings of fact, conclusions of law for Verasso Village North, H2018-0071. Findings of fact, conclusions of law for EEG Office Building, H2018-0081. And the findings of fact, conclusion of law for Meridian High School Auditorium, H2018-0101. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, I'm going to explain the public hearing process. At this time, we will—excuse me—I'll briefly explain the public hearing process. And we will open each item individually and then start with a staff report. The staff will report their findings regarding how the item adheres to our comprehensive plan and Uniform Development Code with the staff's recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present their case for the approval of their application and respond to any staff comments. The applicant will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant has finished, we will open for public testimony. There is a sign-up sheet in the back, and I think we actually have tablets back there. As you entered, for anyone who wishes to testify, please do sign up. Those individuals will be allowed to come forward and speak for up to three minutes. If they are speaking for a larger group, like a homeowners' association, and there is a show of hands to represent that group, then they will be given up to 10 minutes. After all testimony has been heard, the applicant will be given another 10 minutes to respond, take an opportunity to respond if they choose to do so. After that, we will close the public hearing, and the commissioners will have the opportunity to discuss and hopefully be able to make a recommendation to City Council. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for Alturus Rezone, H2018-0105, for the purpose of continuing to November 1.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move we continue H-2018-0105.
It has been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing for Alturus Rezone, H2018-0105, to November 1, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will also open the public hearing for Del Taco, H2018-0106, for the purpose of continuing to November 1. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland?
I move we— I move we continue the public hearing for Del Taco, H-2018-0106, to the date of November 1.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing for Del Taco, H2018-0106, to the date of November 1, 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next is the public hearing for the Goddard School, H2018-0108. We will begin with the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The product before you this evening is a conditional use permit. The site consists of 1.13 acres of land, Zone CG, located at 2009 South Wells Avenue. To the north and west is undeveloped land, Zone CG. To the south is a future townhome development, zoned CG as well—or actually, TNR, sorry. And to the east is an apartment complex, the Fields Apartments, zoned R-40. In 2006, the property was included in the annexation and plat for Canai subdivision. The future land use map designation is mixed-use regional. A CUP is requested for a 10,000-square-foot daycare center for up to 160 children, six weeks to six years old, in the CG district. The site plan depicts how the site is proposed to develop with two access points. The north driveway is accessed via a common drive aisle shared with the property to the north. The south driveway is accessed via Goldstone Street. Cross-access is provided to the adjacent property to the north and is required to be improved with asphalt and curbing. A minimum of 20 parking spaces is required. The applicant is proposing 35 spaces and an excess of UDC standards. Landscape street buffer and multi-use pathway exists along South Wells Avenue and East Goldstone Street. A minimum five-foot pedestrian walkway is required to be provided from the perimeter sidewalk to the entrance of the building. Parking lot landscaping is required to be installed in accord with UDC standards. There are two proposed play areas, one at the north and one at the south. Both are proposed to be enclosed with a six-foot non-scalable fence. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the daycare center. The proposed building is a single-story building. Materials consist of stucco and brick with metal seam awnings. The future structure is required to comply with the design standards listed in the UDC and the Architectural Standards Manual. There was no written testimony for this project. Staff is recommending approval with conditions in the report. The staff will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward, please? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is John Chatfield with Chatfield Architecture. I reside at 1911 Montclair Drive, Boise, Idaho. Thank you for hearing our testimony tonight. I want to start by just kind of recapping what you already have in front of you with the site and the building, and then yield my time to a Goddard daycare representative to go through the Goddard School and their system and any questions you might have about As you know, starting with the site, this is a 1.1-acre site. We're in the designated zone, C-G, which does allow for daycares with a conditional use because of our size. We will be in the Gramercy subdivision and located on the northwest corner of Wells and Goldstone. For site development, we plan on new trees, landscape, the entire site per city code. That includes grass and a stone—kind of a riverbed look in front. We will have direct access from our sidewalks to both Goldstone and Wells. Our parking lot on the east side will have permeable pavers for drainage, so it should look nice. Thirty-five skittles, as was mentioned, is what we're providing to accessible stalls. Our garbage enclosure will be a CMU honed face structure with painted metal gates, so it'll look nice as well. The school will have two playgrounds, one to the north, one to the south, 3,500 square feet and 3,300 square feet. It'll have a padded play surface with artificial turf on both ends. And then it will have play equipment on both sides as well. The playground will be fenced with a six-foot-tall metal fence. You can see through the pickets of the fence. It's not a vinyl fence. It'll be a good-looking fence, painted metal fence. The exterior of the building is, as mentioned, it's brick corners with a Wainscot front and stucco above with window—metal window shading devices above all the windows and above the main entrance. It's a single level. The building was designed to fit the character of the neighborhood. Some of the other buildings in the Gramercy subdivision, we think it blends in and is complementary to them. And we will have exterior lighting around the building—building lighting and then lighting in the parking lot as well. Moving inside, the building is around a 10,000-square-foot building. We have an occupancy group of I-4, which is for daycares. The building will be fully sprinkled and fire-alarmed. There's 160 children. That's the maximum capacity of the school. And it is, you know, six weeks to five-year-old children. There's 10 classrooms. Restrooms will be in each classroom with exterior doors in each classroom as well for additional exiting requirement—not required by code, but required for convenience and above and beyond code in that sense. The facility will also have a multipurpose room, offices, and break room. That's the technical elements of the project in a really quick briefing. And so now, I'd like to yield my time to Brian, who works for the Goddard School franchise, and he can tell you a little bit more about them. So, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. Thank you for allowing us to take some of your time tonight. I assure you, this was not an accident in the daycare setting. Brian Johnston—
Sir, would you mind stating your name and address for the record? Thank you so much.
Brian Johnston, 1016 West Ninth Avenue, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania. I'm the Site Development Manager for Goddard, responsible for the West Coast of the United States. Nationally, Goddard is about to open our 500th school this year, and so we have a very wide presence. Everything that we've put together is as a result of the learning experience over opening those 500 schools. The typical hours, as John had said, is from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., and that's depending on regional demand. Average occupancy nationally, we're looking at about 86% across the—across the system. And for that count, we're looking at somewhere between 430 and 440 is what we're counting as mature schools for that count. Obviously, we have to go through a rigorous licensing process governed by the state of Idaho. And as far as what the staffing is concerned, the teachers must go through master level— I'm sorry, not the teachers, but the directors must go through a master-level program. They would have two teachers per every classroom, plus two to three floaters every day. One of the major concerns that I always get coming to these types of meetings is the parking and the traffic, right? So just to get ahead of that, we don't have a set start time. So nationally, what we see as a peak time is 7 a.m. to 9 a.m. With that rolling start time, that takes the pressure off of the parking lot, but it also takes the pressure off of the needing to have all of the teachers there at one particular time. On any given day, we see approximately 5% to 10% of absentee for illness or vacation or what have you. And 25% of the population nationally is siblings, so you'll have one car for multiple children. As it's stated in the staff report, we're only required for 20 spaces, but we're putting 35 in. We usually get above 30 anyway, even if the requirement's much less, because just nationally, that's what we see as being the sweet spot for the rollover. Most of the spots on a given day will be taken by the staff, the teachers, the director, and the owners. As I said earlier, the rolling start time allows the parents to come in, drop their child off, and then leave. An average turnover is about five to 10 minutes for that. We don't have a drop-off spot. We do require each parent bring their child into the building individually. This obviously helps with rapport and having the interaction with the teachers in the classrooms and everything. But it also allows it to minimize any stacking up of the vehicles—if you can imagine five or six vehicles stacking up idling. So we eliminate that by having the requirement that the parents park in a specific spot and walk their kids in. From a security standpoint, the building will have a double-door entrance. The first door is open to the public and has a viewing window to one or both of the offices. Usually, the office—the building is set up so that the director's on one side and the owner's on the other, and they have a vision panel there where the parents must scan their hand or enter a code to gain access through that second door. All visitors are required to sign in with the office and are escorted through the building personally by one of the directors. As John said, that the, you know, the playground's is secure with a six-foot fence. We like to have the fences be see-through so that if there's anything going on outside of the fence, the teachers can be aware of that and act accordingly ahead of time. Outside of those fences, anywhere the vehicle can come within 30 feet of a child, whether that be within the building or in the playgrounds, it's required to have vehicle protection. And that's either in the form of a vehicle-rated bollard, which I believe it's a 5,000-pound vehicle at 10 miles an hour. So the bollards are rated for that condition or a vehicle-rated fence. All of the fencing will be non-scalable. We do have security cameras located around the building and connected through a CCTV to monitor within the director's office and the owner's office, so there's a sense of security as well. And I guess I'll—before I go too much further, I'll just open it up to some questions, and hopefully I've covered everything, but if not, I'm happy to answer anything. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
So I'm kind of intrigued about the dropping off and getting in the kids. So we've got 35 parking spa—spots. How many employees did we—I didn't get the full count of what we anticipated for employees.
We have two—two teachers per classroom. I don't—I don't recall how many—
Classrooms.
Ten classrooms. That'd be 20 teachers, but we also have two to three floaters. And the reason being is if there's—a—we always have to be within ratio for the state guidelines. And so if a teacher has to—has an emergency outside a classroom, needs to use a restroom or something like that, they can either call one of the floaters in to cover that ratio or have one of the directors come into that room for that particular time. Because we have a rolling start time, not all of those 20 teachers need to be there right away. And so if we see a pattern over the course of a year or so where, you know, it's staggered fairly well, some of those teachers might not need to show up until, say, 8 o'clock. And so that obviously takes some of those parking spaces and allows them to be used for drop-off, what have you.
Okay. Because I was just looking at, you know, 24 individuals. That's taken up a good percentage of the parking for dropping off 160 kids, and so just trying to wrap my brain around that.
I completely understand, and that's a question that I get to answer every time I stand in front of a commission such as yours.
Have you had pretty good success with not having a lot of people having to park off-site to try to drop off their kids at other facilities like this?
Yes, in some instances, if it's in a—depending on the situation, we would have a reciprocity with an adjacent business. Maybe it would be a doctor's office that might not open until later, or if it's in a plaza with some retail spaces. So it really is site-dependent.
Okay.
Ideally, we like to keep everything on-site like we have here. When we have the proper amount of spaces like we have here, we never have issues with off-site parking.
And do you guys have, like, an events that would have all your parents try to come in at once, or do you not— or do you have more localized-type events per classroom type situation, just?
That's really up to the particular owner. They will have some events such as graduation, which obviously wouldn't entail the entire student body, but there could be some open houses and that nature. If that would come to fruition, we would have to just figure out the best course of action for that. Throughout the system, though, we really overemphasize with our directors and our owners, the parking and traffic issue is one that always comes up in these meetings, and we want to convey that to them. If we see that the parents just aren't behaving properly, we make sure that that's addressed immediately. We take it very seriously. Because we understand that we want to be good neighbors, and that's a way that we could maybe not be a good neighbor, and so we want to maintain those relationships. And obviously, we wouldn't be hitting our 500th school if we didn't take that seriously.
And I appreciate that, because, you know, that's a lot of kids to put in and out of a school, so I appreciate your conscientiousness about parking and drop-off and pickup.
Sure, and I think to your point about, you know, the events—if it would be an event that would be a larger event that would have more than the allotment, it wouldn't be more than maybe one or two times a year. It would be very, very minimized. But with graduation, again, if you're looking at maybe the largest class be 25, 30 kids, you know, that's—still fits within our parking arrangement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, what are the width of the parking spaces? I mean, do you have issues with—you know, if you have a parent that has three children and they're getting them out of the car seats, and the parent next door is trying to open their door, I mean, are there issues with those kinds of things? Because it does seem to—on top of your teachers, you'll probably also have a director there and an office administration person there, and so you're probably talking about, like, 23 to 25 people at any one time. So then, does that—with that issue that Commissioner Yearsley mentioned, how is that working with parents who are getting kids in and out of car seats and, you know, making sure the three-year-old isn't running across the parking lot? So can you—can you just go into more detail about that, or do you not run into issues in that regard?
We generally don't run into issues. I know that, you know, the directors and the owners take pride in what they do, and it becomes a little family within the school. And if they—a director sees or an owner sees a mom struggling, obviously, that person will be going right out there. And I've seen it personally where a director has excused themselves in one of our site visits to go help a mom, even if it's just to open a door to help get a stroller through. The support is there. Nothing is in place formally to address that. We try to orient our parking lots so that the ones that are being used the most would be closer to the building to minimize any of that running away, that sort of thing. I don't have a formal answer for that, other than just—I've seen it in person that it's —it's just kind of inspiring how it's a team, you know? It works.
Okay. Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will take public testimony. Is there anyone signed up?
There were people signed—two folks signed in. Neither indicated they wished to testify.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to come up and speak? Okay. All right, so at this time, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for item
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move to close H-2018-0108.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley?
I appreciate the work that they've gone into this. You know, when I first saw the application, I was really concerned about traffic and getting kids in and out of this facility without causing a lot of a mess, you know? Taking my daughter to high school can be quite a challenge sometimes, so I'm grateful for their planning and their experience that they've had this so they can actually try to maximize or minimize the disruption. So based on their discussion, I feel comfortable moving this one for—approving this one.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson?
I would just add, I agree, and I'm glad that area's kind of starting to develop a little bit, and I think this is a good addition to that area, so I will be supporting the application.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland?
I would echo both Commissioners' comments here. I think it looks like a good fit to a mixed-use area. I appreciate all the detail that they provided and the work they put into it.
All right, well, I also concur. I think this is a really good location and a needed location for a learning center like this, so thank you for all the diligence that you have put into the design.
Madam Chair. After considering all staff and applicant—and public testimony, I move to approve file number H2018-0108 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 18, 2018, with no modifications.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve public hearing for the Goddard School, H2018—excuse me, H2018-0108. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing for Jocelyn Park Subdivision, Let's begin with the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. This is a preliminary plat. The approximate site is near the southwest corner of Victory—West Victory Road and South Meridian Road. Aerial shot, so you can kind of see what's going on in the area. The site consists of 13.32 acres of land, which is zoned R-8, located near the southwest corner of Victory and Meridian Road, as I mentioned. The property is surrounded by residential, single-family homes, which are zoned R-8 and R-4. And this property was annexed in 2013 as part of the Victory South subdivision. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is medium-density residential. The applicant's proposing to develop a site with 23 single-family residential lots and two common lots. The gross density of the proposed plat is 1.73 dwelling units per acre with a net density of 2.62. With a request to step down in density, the project falls within the target density of the medium-density residential designation. The average lot size is greater than 15,000 square feet, and all the proposed lots comply with the dimensional standards of the UDC. Staff is of the opinion that the proposed density is appropriate for the area and compatible with the adjacent uses and zoning. All adjacent residential uses are zoned R-U-T, R-8, and R-4, and the proposed zoning would be consistent. There is a concern with—going back to the plat—typically, we require that there's a maximum block length. If you recall, we approved the Timberline subdivision directly to the west of this project. I can pull up the aerial again. So this property here that appears undeveloped has been received— So this, this property here that appears undeveloped has been, received preliminary plat approval, and they did not require or did not provide a stub street other than the one stub street to the north. And so this, this property exceeds the, again, exceeds the block length. But City Council can approve a maximum block length up to 1,200 square feet. So the applicant is going to request for a exception to that section of code. Access is provided via one access to Winnipeg Street to the east and one to the west, which is West Cumberland Drive. The applicant is proposing one additional stub street to the parcel to the north, or east, depending on how you look at it, this, this location here. Future connectivity and to limit direct access to West Victory Road. Sidewalks are required along all public streets to set forth in the UDC. The applicant is proposing to construct a five-foot-wide attached sidewalk along internal streets. They're also required to install a five-foot detached sidewalk along the entire frontage of West Victory Road. A minimum of 10% qualified open space is required to be provided for the development in accord with UDC standards. Based on the area of the plat, which is 13.32 acres, a minimum of 1.33 acres of qualified open space is required to be provided. The applicant has proposed 19.9% or 2.65 acres of land as open space. All developments consisting of five or more acres are required to provide a minimum of one-site amenity. One additional site amenity is required for each additional 20 acres. Based on the acreage of 13.32, one qualified site amenity is required. The applicant is proposing a tot lot and a gazebo. The applicant, on their landscape plan, is showing the gazebo and the tot lot up in the northern common lot, up near the Rodenbach Canal. There's also a large common lot to the south, would be a pond and some, some open space in that area. Building elevations, the applicant's provided some conceptual building elevations that appear to meet UDC standards. Building materials appear to consist of a mix of a variety of wood siding, cultured stone, and stucco with architectural shingles. Homes will not require design review, but should be constructed generally consistent with the submitted elevations and materials. Staff did not receive any written testimony. The applicant did provide some mockups of the play structure that they'll provide near the Rodenbach Canal up on their northern common lot. That, staff is recommending approval, and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Commissioners, have any questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
So that, that road that steps to the east, are we not requiring a turnaround on that? Or is that not long enough to require a turnaround? Or what's the status of that one?
I believe it's long enough to require a turnaround. I know that it looks like they're providing some sort of a turnaround on their own property.
I'm talking the one on the, the north, because that one actually steps into the existing subdivision. That, the other one on the, the north side steps to the...
Great question. Let's me look at the staff report while we get an answer for you.
Josh, would you like us to continue with applicant testimony?
Please, please. That was my intention, yes.
Thank you. Will the applicant please come forward? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Victor Valagas, 141 East Carlton Avenue here in Meridian. I am with the law offices of Borton Leakey here representing the applicant tonight. Thank you for having me. Just to go straight to at least one of the questions from Commissioner Yearsley, and that has to do with the, that street up there to the north. Looking at that and speaking to one of our design individuals, our understanding is that supposed to be possibly a, for future connectivity to that adjoining parcel. However, if that is a concern, one of the things that we would be willing to agree to is to have that as a condition of approval that will, will bulb that out for now, and then as it opens up to, if that site ever develops, then that would allow for future connectivity to that. Again, just, just looking at the, the staff report, as well as the site specific conditions of approval, we really have no objections to what the staff has said about this, this project. In fact, I believe the conclusion of the staff report is that this application exceeds the minimum standards of the UDC, and we agree with that. Looking at the, the findings that this commission and the City Council need to look at in terms of recommending and ultimately approving a preliminary plat, first of all, the plat has to be in conformance with a comprehensive plan. Commissioners, you've heard the testimony from, from staff, and it's also indicated in the staff report itself that this application does conform with the comprehensive plan. The, the area out there is, I believe it's medium, medium-density residential, and this application meets that designation in the comp plan. The, one of the other findings is that there are public services available or can be made available adequate to accommodate the proposed development. Staff has, has found and recommended that public services will be available upon development of this project. We believe that to be accurate as well. The, there, there has to be a finding that the development will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. We're not aware of any special site-specific or conditions that would, would make this application detrimental to the public health. There's a, one of the other findings is that the plat is in conformance with scheduled public improvements in accord with the city's capital improvements plan. This subdivision will not require capital improvement funds because the development will be providing the, the utilities, or will be available to it. Interestingly, one that, the, one of the other findings is that the development preserves significant natural, scenic, or historic features. There are none. This current site, it used to be a storage lagoon. And so we're, we're, we're making this site better by, by placing single-family detached homes on the site. There was one other comment I, I read in the staff report. It had to do with the, the type of playground that was going to be used in the tot lots. But as the commission saw, there was a picture that was submitted to staff that I think that probably, hopefully, addresses staff's concerns regarding what type of playground structure was going to be placed on the tot lot. With that said, I stand for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
And I, it was kind of hard to tell, but is there going to be a fence between the, the open space and the, there's a canal running through the, the north end of that property, too? Isn't that not correct?
Commissioner Yearsley, there is. If you look at your landscape plan, kind of where my mouse is, it shows where the fence is located.
Okay. And that's why I wanted to make sure. And then, I know this is probably a bond beyond my scope, but given that this was a lagoon, are we, is there going to be some significant grading? Are we going to make this look like a depression? Are, do you, do we have a plan for what they're wanting to do on the grading of this, given that it's in a depression?
Commissioner Yearsley, I'm, I would hazard to guess that since it is, it looks like a depression now, that I'm sure the city engineers are going to require that, that the property be brought to grade in order to, to have an adequate base to build these single-family dwellings.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to testify?
Madam Chair, we had one sign in wishing to testify, Kimberly Juarez.
Please come forward. Did you say Kimberly?
I did. She was signed in for multiple, so I'm not sure she's physically here.
Okay. If she's not present, is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify? Okay.
And I guess, Madam Chair, did we find out about what we're going to do on that cul-de-sac? Or was that going to be a cul-de-sac, or what?
So Commissioner Yearsley, the, the staff report, as you see in front of you, does not have that condition in there, but FIRE has indicated that anything over 150 feet requires there to be a turnaround. So they'll have to accommodate that somehow.
Okay.
It's about 218 feet.
So it is, there is a condition that they have to meet. Okay.
Thank you. At this time, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson.
I move to close the public hearing for H-2018-0100.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner Yearsley.
You know, this is actually a, a nice infill project to finally get that whole area kind of cleaned up and, and the mess that it had gone through. So I think they've done a pretty decent job making it look good and, and trying to meet the, the look of that area. I know we caused the condition for the longer block length, so I, I think we recommend that that be approved through City Council, but it's not our condition to approve. But overall, I think the houses look really nice, and I think it'll be a, a really nice subdivision.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson.
Just to add one point, I'm in support, too. I just, I appreciate the open space. I think we're scrutinizing things like that, and have been, rightly so. We can be a little more selective in our requirements, and I appreciate stuff like that, like the open space, and, and I think, I agree, this is a good project.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holland.
I echo the same comments. I think they've, they've done a nice job of including some open space, providing some, some good future planning here, and I don't see any concerns. I would like to, I don't know if we need to make a, a note in our motion that they have that bulb out, or if that's something that would just be taken care of by the, the requirements from FIRE.
You're asking about the, the turnaround for the 150-foot road section? I, if you add that as a condition, if you'd like to, I think that's probably not, not a terrible idea. We don't have that as a specific condition, but I know that the fire department holds those, those, them developers to that standard. If you'd like, I can pull up the staff report, and you can make that a condition if you want to, just to make sure our bases are covered.
I think it's a good idea. Mr. Holland.
I believe if we just make a motion, you'll make a note to add that in in the future? That's what we're...
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I can, before you tell me what you want me to do.
Mr. Holland, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to City Council of file number H-2018-0100 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 18, 2018, with the following modification, that we amend the staff report in the conditions and mitigation measures, Section 8, 1.1.9, that the, there would be a bulb out at the...
Northeast.
The northeast corner of the parcel where the road comes out.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to approve item number H-20180100 with modifications to the staff report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, non-opposed. At this time, we will open the public hearing for Rockberry Townhomes, H-20180091. Let's begin with the staff report.
For you is another preliminary plat. This site consists of 6.23 acres of land, which is zoned R15, located at 4373 West Tree Crest, Tree Crest Drive. The property is surrounded by residential uses to the west, north, and east, and a future church to the south, zoned CN. The property was annexed into the city in 2006 as Tree Farm subdivision and received preliminary plat approval in 2017. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is medium-density residential. The applicant proposes to develop the site with 47 single-family residential lots and eight common lots. Gross density is 5.8 dwelling units per acre with a net density of 12.4, which falls within the target density of the medium-density residential designation. Gross density for the subdivision is 5.8. As I said, staff is of the opinion that the proposed density is appropriate for the area and compatible with the adjacent uses and zoning, also compatible with the conceptual development plan that was approved with the development agreement back when the property was annexed in 2006. Development of the site is required to comply with the dimensional standards listed in the UDC for the R15 district. The average lot size is 3,527 square feet. All of the proposed lots comply with the dimensional standards. Vehicle access is proposed for this site. One access to North Tree Farm Way to the east and an emergency access to the north or to West Tree Crest Drive. The applicant is proposing to construct a private street to provide access and circulation within the development. UDC requires private streets to be constructed within, within, within an easement and have a travel lane width of 24 or 26 feet. No allowed parking is determined by the fire marshal. Proposed private streets are all internal to the development or, or to be constructed as a combination of 25 and 27-foot street sections. The applicant is proposing to share the private street with pedestrian and vehicles. Staff initially had concerns with that. What you see before you here is the applicant's changes to some of the conditions of approval from the staff report. And I'll go through those in just a second here for you. Initially, there is concerns about parking, and the applicant has provided some additional parking here internally. Three spaces plus an ADA stall close to their community structure, the fountain and plaza area of their project. Also included a sidewalk around the central. Let me see where my mouse is here. So as you can see, it's a combination of on-street pedestrian connectivity, and then, you can see where my mouse is, a sidewalk going back across the street, and there is a four-foot sidewalk that goes around the entire center area of the development, as well as several pedestrian connections out to sidewalks that would be constructed along Tree Crest and Tree Haven Way, and several, as I said, several. So it's a, it's a private street, so there will be gates, and they're required to have pedestrian access through those gates as well. 10% qualified open space is required, again, for this development. Based on the area of the plat, which is 6.23 acres, a minimum of 0.62 acres of qualified open space are required. The applicant's providing 0.66 acres or 11% open space. Site amenities include a plaza, water feature, and a community structure that also accommodates Building elevations have been submitted by the applicant. Pretty consistent mix of a variety of wood siding with architectural shingles. The applicant will be required to submit a certificate of zoning compliance application for any required parking, as shown on their site plan, as well as administrative design review for any attached single-family homes. Majority of the structures are attached. I shouldn't say the majority. All of them are attached. The combination of two and four structures are, uh, single-family attached homes connected. As the RR15, the side setback is three feet. Initially, staff had concerns about the number of... Initially, staff had concerns about the number of, the ability of guests to park within the development. Even if it was a public street, the majority of the structures, there are driveways, so there's not a whole lot of area to park because it is a private street, and with the narrow width of the streets, the fire marshal has restricted it to, it's all just a fire lane. There is no parking anywhere within the development, the exception of on-driveways. So there's two cars required, and each individual parcel is required to have two stalls in a, in a garage, as well as two in a driveway. And we've asked the applicant to make a proposal for additional parking. And so they've, they've done that with these four stalls. Not receive any written testimony in this application. Staff is recommending approval. They've made some, some strides to make some improvements since the staff report was written. There are still some concerns about parking into the development as far as staff is concerned, but we are still recommending approval. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Yearsley.
Josh, did I hear that you're, they're proposing four-foot sidewalks?
Correct. Or, just to further explain that, we, we don't require sidewalks with private streets. So they're, they're proposing four, four-foot.
I, I just find four feet is really hard to walk side by side with somebody, so that's, that's my only concern with the four-foot sidewalks.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Will the applicant please come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Nye. Address is 904 Madrid Avenue, Torrance, California, 90501. Just wanted to give a quick overview. Staff has already done an excellent job in detailing this project, but as, just a point of reference, a quick overview. The Rockberry North, which is this project, is a planned development consisting of 47 single-family dwellings. The project is designed as a gated, fully maintained community with onsite amenities, as well as access to Spurwing Country Club by means of their lifestyle membership. The onsite amenities include a water feature, plaza, clubhouse, dog walk park area, and walking paths surrounding the development. The secure interior is maintained through wrought iron fencing around the perimeter and between the units. Walking path access gates are located on all four sides of the development, as well as through the, where the, the drive for the cars. The interior of the development is accessed on the east side by the main vehicular gate. The subdivision will be maintained by a homeowners association. Rockberry has been in preliminary discussions with Spurwing HOA, and we anticipate that Rockberry North will become a sub-association of that, of that HOA, of the master Spurwing HOA. And we believe that this will help create a continuity between all of the subdivisions there in the Spurwing development. The design and the structural feel of the project is currently in development, with preliminary design elevations, which we've included with our package submitted to the city. The design is being created to fit well within and complement the overall structural feel and architect of the community at large. The townhome concept isn't new to the Treasure Valley market, but in this area, it's relatively undeveloped. We believe that this design and concept adds additional housing options while maintaining the quality and integrity already established in the North Meridian location. A well-developed combination of wood siding, stone, stucco, metal railing, trees, trellis, porches, rooftop patios, interior site lighting, and extensive landscaping will help create the luxurious feel of our planned community. And at this point, I'm taking any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Have you built many of these elsewhere?
No. Our other projects have been smaller in scope. We have developed some out in Napa is our other project, but that was more of a multifamily apartment, quad-type living. So this is relatively new to us, but yes.
I have a few questions regarding the three-foot setbacks. Was that, can you give some more, three-foot setbacks? There are a few communities in this area that have those, but they're, they're pretty rare. And so we always, as a commission, I shouldn't say always, we tend to, to have some caution with those. And so, just curious, is, was that for the intention of getting a certain number of units in, or, you know, and, and also, how are the eaves going to work? And can you just give a little more information about that, please?
Yeah, actually, I've got Pete Rockwell with our Rockwell Architects here. He can address any of the architectural part of that. Pete, if you're available. And Leslie is here with Breckenland Design, who can address some of the land issues.
So, I guess, before he comes up, Madam Chair, so, I just want to clarify that you're proposing four, four-foot sidewalks on the interior. Would you have any heartburn to go to five-foot sidewalks?
Well, if, if you look on the site plan, what we have established in addition to the four-foot sidewalk, which is an additional amenity for people accessing that, is we have a, a paver section that's beside the road for additional access that, because of the variation in, from asphalt to pavers, creates a walk area, even crosswalks through the development, that can be delineated as additional access walking area. So we feel like between the two of them, it would be created enough access, plus designating the area as a 10 mile an hour speed limit will, and it's a relatively small area. It's not, it's not very large. So with those two, we believe that it will give people sufficient access from outside in and also circulation within the development.
So you won't have a curb?
Right.
Okay. And then, before he comes up, as far as the parking goes, staff had, had mentioned their concerns about parking. Is there any possibility or interest in, instead of having the three spots with the ADA spot there next to the plaza, maybe bringing that park in just a little bit and putting some parallel parking around that section?
We can provide additional parking, and Leslie, you may be able to address this. With the 50 by 100 space required for the open, we have, we slid the parking up into, by the clubhouse. She may be able to address if we're able to provide additional nosing parking versus parallel parking
Okay.
in that area. We have also, I spoke with Josh Beach earlier today about providing additional parking in the, would be the northwest corner. We have, and the question that, at that point was, can we provide that off of what is essentially a private drive, which he's indicated that we can. So we can provide some additional parking there. We have a dog park, a walk area, established for that right now, but if, if we need to, we can provide some additional spaces there.
And you feel like you can still stay in with, within the 10% open space requirement doing that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, can you just give a, a little further explanation of the use of that clubhouse?
The clubhouse is a, it's a meeting area for people that live in the development. So if you have a family over, a large group, that you want to do an outdoor barbecue or just a place to meet, you will have restrooms in it with a kitchen,
Okay.
kitchenette. So that's a place that people can have family get-togethers, a little meeting room, and it will be run by the HOA. So, yeah.
Yeah, is there, what's the time we have left? For the applicant? It's not showing up on my screen.
When you start questions, I stop the timer.
Oh, okay, okay.
Whatever you want.
If he would like to come forward, that would be great.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Pete Rockwell. I live at 66 Floris Parkway Court, Boise, Idaho. On the question of the, the three-foot setback, it was a combination of things. So this is basically a townhouse development, so it's groups of single-family homes gathered together in groups of twos, threes, and fours. So those are, you know, squished together, and then there's, there's three feet on each of the other lots. So we're six feet apart in probably about three or four locations only in this whole 47 deals. The other, the two walkways, north and south, have got walkways that are 12, 15 feet wide. And then at both the entries, there's more space, too. So I don't think that the three-foot setback is a problem on this anywhere. As far as eaves, I think we're allowed, you know, 18 inches into that setback. To check that out, make sure I'm accurate on that. So that's how we would handle those. Anything else?
Any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will take public testimony. Is there anyone signed up?
The only sign-in was Kimberly Juarez.
Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Jane Albert, 6628 North Salvia Way in Meridian, in Spurwing Greens. I have a couple of questions, more than just comments. I, I have some concern about, in the project folder, there were, there was something called color renderings, and that's very different than what's being shown tonight, or in the application on the staff report. It, it doesn't show elevations any, any close to what we're seeing here. And it also shows, I'm concerned about also this, the clubhouse building. I'm not sure where that shows on the site plan that's being shown here. Also, on the color renderings, there, this is referred to as Spurwing Townhomes. So I have some questions about that, and I don't know how to ask the applicant or the developer.
The applicant will have time to come back up and answer.
All right. I also had a question about the landscape buffer on Tree Haven Way, what that's, what that's going to look like and what the size of that is. When I was looking through the application, I saw that the Fire Department, I have a question mark, Fire Department sign-off. The last communication I see is in August of 2017, and I didn't see a, a agency comment. And they were talking about changing the radiuses and such, so I'm just curious about that. Also, I spoke before the Spurwing Homeowners Association meeting last night about this project, and asked if it was, if they had approached us about joining the master association. And the answer actually was that they had not talked to them, or talked about coming into the master association. And I don't believe that, if so, that these elevations wouldn't meet the architectural requirements. So those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. I think between the staff and the applicant, we probably can answer a good majority of those. Is there anyone else here that would like to testify? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Susan Carnes. I live at 5556 South Graffy Way here in Meridian. I apologize for my voice. I've got a little laryngitis. I have a concern about this project. I have a family member who recently moved into a similar project in Boise. And here you have a community center planned in a gated community, but where are people going to park? When we have a family gathering, we have 20 people in our family, and I think this is scant parking. I think it's totally inadequate. And I say that having tried to negotiate her new living situation in Boise. And I think we really set the bar very low if we're willing to accept 11% green space in such a desirable part of our city. So I don't think that the green space is adequate. I certainly don't think that parking is either. And those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I see someone over? Please come forward.
Hi. My name is Shelley Lufa. I live at 7030 North Santa Glen Way in Meridian. Few points I wanted to make as a resident that lives near this development. I did read Mindy's report about the traffic. I was a little concerned that a traffic study is not required, specifically because of, A, the approved Costco development, the fact that this development, or this intersection, rather, is already approximately 20% over the planned capacity. The trips that will be generated by this development, even though it is small, represent 10% of the capacity that was, of that intersection as it was designed, and we're already way over that. And then adding the church on top of that creates additional traffic problems. In analyzing the church traffic and getting out of that intersection, we estimate that leaving that intersection on a Sunday after church lets out will take 38 minutes to get out of that intersection, to clear all of that area, because there's only about seven cars that get to turn left at that intersection at one time. So it's a big concern. 38 minutes is life or death for someone who's having a, an ambulance-type situation. I was surprised to see these elevations, I guess they're called, that significantly vary from what was originally presented to homeowners. These are extremely bland, boring. We actually showed them at our board meeting last night, and someone thought that they looked like tract homes or low-income housing. So this does not definitely meet with the architectural standards that are in our community at this time. I have a concern about this, basically it's three long, straight streets in this neighborhood. The longest one on the south side is 630-something feet, which if you can imagine your head, is the length of two football fields long, of houses that are exactly lined up with one another. That is monotonous and repetitive, and people don't respond well to that type of architecture in their environment. It actually is a negative. In addition, I didn't see anything from the Fire Department report or email exchange that said that, how are they going to respond? If you say, oh, I'm in the gray townhouse with the white door, how are they going to find it in all of this monotonous, repetitive building? I'm additionally concerned about the green space being eaten up, and I see that my time is out, so I will end. I think that at this point, there are just too many unknowns and too many other things to be researched and verified to make an approval on this plan. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
To respond.
I'm sorry. My apologies. Would the applicant like to come back and respond, please?
Yes, thank you. In regards to, there were several comments made about the renderings of initial brochure. When we had our initial meeting with the neighborhood about a year ago, we had some preliminary drawings that were distributed to, as some mockups of what was happening in the plaza, and just very basic drawings of the buildings. They were more like placeholders. Since that time, we have had some redesign done by our architect, and that's what you see before you right now. So that's the, the updated from what was originally expressed by the concerned people.
Do you know about how long ago those were submitted to staff? How long have they been available for the public to view?
Since August.
August.
Yeah, since we submitted. Yeah, since we submitted our package, the first of August, those elevations have been available. It's the same ones. Another comment was made about Spurwing Town Homes. Again, that was a placeholder a year ago when we were starting the process. We didn't have a name, which we still don't for the development, so we were just, we had just put a placeholder name on there, and it was called Spurwing Town Homes, just as a designation of what was, where it was going and what it was versus an actual name for the product. So it will not have either of those names in the signage that ultimately ends up at the development. One question was on the landscaping on Tree Haven Way. There's a minimum of a ten-foot landscape buffer from back of sidewalk, so that's the minimum size that would be developed out on the landscaping. So just to answer that question, they weren't sure what size that was. As far as traffic goes, yes, our development is small, but definitely will have an impact. We've already been notified that we will not be given any building permits until the road on Black Hat is opened up, so that people will be able to have an additional access point to Chinon, will be not only off Tree Farm Way, but also off of Black Hat. And in regards to the church, we're really not part of that project. We don't really have anything to do with it. They have to deal with their own traffic when they come to submit for their project. Adequate parking. When we received notification from staff that additional parking would be required or requested, we didn't have a number, so we didn't know exactly what we were dealing with as far as spaces. So as we mentioned before, we do have some additional area that we can expand for additional parking needs, and we can work with staff on that to make sure that they have additional spaces within the development itself. As far as the fire department access and notification, all the buildings, they are, all the units are single-family. They're addressed, just like any other home is. And so I don't think identification of that, they have their own emergency access if needed, that they can access the site, and we'll be able to easily determine which houses they need to respond to. I think that was all the questions that I, unless you can think of something else that needs to be addressed.
Can you also address the concern regarding the master subdivision not being aware that Rockberry would like to join?
I don't know. We've been working with Joy, who is the representative. What's Joy's last name? Jones, Joy Jones. So we've had quite a few discussions with her in regards to that and actually formatting and developing the agreement for our development. So maybe it hasn't gotten to all the people yet, don't know, because it's still at the HOA level, so.
Commissioners, do you have any more questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Yearsley.
So I've been kind of mulling over the parking and what is a decent number and trying to pinpoint kind of what a good range is and going back and forth. Would you be amenable to like point-two parking stalls per unit? That'd put you about ten total parking spaces.
I believe that will put us, if we take, if we do ten, that'll put us over as far as our open space. It'll reduce that even more. We do have parking on Tree Haven Way to the east, so there is parking out there if need be.
Commissioner Yearsley, if I could quickly, the required open spaces, we call it qualified open space, so it has to be fifty by a hundred anyway. So the area over here in the northwest doesn't count for qualified open space anyway.
Right.
So I think that, you know, I'm not kind of eyeballing it. Maybe they could get five or six parking spaces in that area, and if it was straight on and backed into that common driveway, I think that probably gets you most of the way to ten.
Okay.
That'll get us pretty close.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson.
I move to close the public hearing on H-2018-0091.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for Rockberry Town Homes, H-2018-0091. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I think one of the biggest concerns noted is the parking and also the open space. I always hate when you have to get rid of more green space for parking. I wish that there could just be a way of adding more green space and more parking, but obviously that's not something we can necessarily control too much. I like having the green space in the middle of the plaza because I think it makes it nice for all the residents to be able to access it evenly, rather than having it on just one side of the parcel. That's my initial thought for now. I might have more later.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Yearsley.
You know, I think this is not a bad mix for this area, understanding the area that it's at. I agree, I do like the open space and, but yeah, I am concerned, and I don't want to put a burden on the other neighbors by having them park on Tree Haven, is my concern. I've been going through while he's been talking on different iterations on what percentage, you know, well, what made perfect sense, and, you know, I, just gut feel, I think that point-two is not a bad fill. I'd be curious to see what your thoughts is, because that puts it about nine-point-four, so it'd be ten spaces, so. And I think he could probably work some of that in there as possible.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Wilson.
I mean, I think that's reasonable. I don't know, Bill usually is the advocate for more parking. He excels at that. But I think, I mean, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable compromise, and again, sometimes you've got to make trade-offs.
I'd like to see an extra spot or two there in the, in the middle area to kind of even it out and not have it all clustered on the one end. Be nice to even add some additional parking farther, farther to the east, but if there was a few spots added there in the center and then five or six spots added on the west side, that would accommodate nicely. Three-foot setbacks always give me pause, even though technically they can be applied for in the R-15 zone, they just, they do. I'm curious, my fellow commissioners' thoughts on it in this application.
Madam Chair, I agree. The three-foot setbacks are really tight. However, we live next door to the Sobi subdivision, and they have the three-foot setbacks. And, you know, for the most part, it's not bad. I mean, it, you know, it's not the greatest thing to look at, but, you know, that does have enough of a break there that, you know, you can kind of separate between the different homes, and so.
Is that with, just with the single levels there or with the two stories?
They've got two stories in there as well, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Wait, Holland.
I think my, my comment with the three-foot setbacks, I tend to, I agree with you, I like to have more setbacks because I'd like to have more space between it when you're wanting to walk between properties. When you're looking at a townhome product, I think it's less critical because they're already attached units, but since they're not detached units, I don't have as much pause for concern. I'd still always like to see a little bit more setbacks when we can.
Yeah, I agree. I also agree with Commissioner Yearsley's comments regarding not parking on Tree Haven. That, that street is already very full, and I don't, I don't think we should add any additional expectation to that. Josh, were you looking up something regarding the fire department comments, agency comments?
The only real concern they had was making sure that it was signed, no parking fire lane. Other than that, they didn't really have a concern with access. We've got comments from them on response times and resources available, and the majority of the concern was just making sure that it was signed appropriately for no parking.
Okay. Commissioner Yearsley.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to the city council of file number H-2018-0091 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, with the following modification, that the off-site parking or off-street parking within this compound have to make, meet a point-two per lot or per home parking requirement, and that's all.
Second.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Yearsley, one clarification, one clarification question for you on your motion. Do we want to have them revise this map and have that for council, for consideration?
I think they need to have that so they can show that they can meet that condition, yes.
Second.
Quickly, staff's recommendation is just, if you want ten, just have them provide ten parking spaces that's cleaner and you don't have to worry about arithmetic errors or whatever.
All right. So I think ten would be good. I will make my, make that change to ten and have the site plan revised to show those ten spaces before city council.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Rockberry Town Homes, H-2018-0091, with stated All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Next, we will open the public hearing for residential district naming convention text amendment H-2018-0059, and begin with the staff report.
That was a mouthful. Good evening, members of the commission. Last item on the agenda this evening is the UDC text amendment before you. This request is actually coming before you from a private request. It's not a staff-initiated request, as you typically see. Just for the members in the audience, and the one thing that I would like to point out to the commission this evening is, staff has continually received public testimony on this application, even during the hearing as it's going on now, so I just want to share that with you, that there is, this is a hot topic this evening, so stay tuned, and we'll try to give you those updated numbers. I don't know exactly where we're at now, but maybe clerk can chime in and let us know how many people have signed up in opposition of this particular project. But first of all, I want the commission and the audience to really focus on this summary table that's before you. And the reason why this slide came about was the same reason that we're talking about this requested change before you this evening. In the past, there has been some confusion with the way our zoning ordinances are being applied. And what I mean by it is, if you look at the zoning designations on here, so we have, in our zoning ordinance, we have a low-density residential zone, a medium-high-density residential zone, et cetera, et cetera. But we do, what we do on the map is we have an abbreviated version for those type, those zoning districts that are in our, or in our zoning ordinance. And that correlates to an R-two, an R-four, an R-eight zoning district. Well, a few years ago, our zoning ordinance did have a maximum density requirement in our code. That came before this body and ultimately went before city council, and that density requirement, maximum density requirement, was removed from the code. And we wanted the comp plan to guide density for our city, because that's the vision document that we use when we look at these development applications. So keep that in context. So when we, when we look at those areas or when they come in, we have to make those findings that they are consistent with the comp. This is something that we've talked about for a long time, and so this graphic that's before you was kind of what spurred that conversation or that change. We realized, once we'd made that UDC text amendment and took out that density requirement of the code, that the R-two, R-four, R-eight could still imply density. And we had talked about, at some point, meeting with our UDC focus group and having a larger discussion with our community partners. That was, that's, those conversations have occurred, but not, they're not vetted enough to come back and bring it forward to you. So the applicant was willing to go ahead and do that and have that conversation with you this evening. So really, the application before you this evening is twofold. There's actually two requests that are being proposed to be amended. One has to do, again, with the map symbol of our residential zoning districts and how they're displayed on our zoning maps and how they're defined in our code, or not really defined, but displayed in our code. And the other one is changing dimensional standards for our R-15 zoning districts. As you look through the staff report, this one simple change affects multiple areas in our staff report, multiple, or multiple sections in our zoning ordinance. So even though it's, one, on paper, it looks like it's an easy change to modify that, it isn't. You have to go through every section of code to make sure that everywhere it says R-two, R-four, R-eight, R-15 has to be changed in a three-hundred-page document. And so the staff report got a little bit longer as I continued to work on it. So I'm not going to highlight all of the changes as part of the UDC text amendment, but I can tell you from the public testimony that we are receiving, this seems to be the crux of the conversations on what we're hearing. And the main focus for why the neighbors are concerned is because we are in the middle of a comprehensive plan update. A lot of the residents want to be part of that process, and they are part of that process, giving us feedback. So I do want to go on record and say that this particular change doesn't affect the update to the comprehensive plan. This is merely to try to clean up something that we wanted to clean up a few years ago and just haven't had a chance to do that, at least on staff's timeframe. We had always envisioned coming back to this, we just weren't ready to do it yet, but the applicant, again, was ready to do that. So again, what the applicant's proposing this evening with the R, to change R-two, R-four, R-eight, R-15, R-40 to an R-A, R-B, R-C, R-D, R-E designation, we don't think that's the right way to go either. And that way, that's the reason why in my staff report, staff recommended the changes that you see before you on the screen. If you look at the other zoning designations below our residential zones, you can see that this is in alignment with many other districts that we have in our zoning ordinance. So again, we realize there needs to be a change. I'm not advocating this is the best change at this time, but what I'm saying is, this is the most consistent change and the one that makes the most sense if the commission and the council decide to approve this change. And that's why we have that R-dash-LD, R-dash-MLD, it's consistent, again, with the rest of the zoning districts. The other item that I would like to point out to you as part of this change is something you should take into consideration. So I did a quick query in our GIS map and realized that we have over thirty-nine thousand parcels that are zoned R-four, R-two, R-four, R-eight, all the way through to R-40 zone, and that number continually increases as plats and subdivisions record, we get more and more of these lots. That communication has not been shared with those residents. And the reason why is because typically, when you go through a zoning ordinance amendment, the code does not require that we notify residents, and it does not require neighborhood meeting. But the fact that we have these many neighbors here testifying, or citizens here testifying and advocating to you this evening, I'm very impressed that we have that much turnout for UDC text amendment, because typically, we don't. So that's why the process is a little bit different than when you have a parcel-specific application before you. So keep that in mind. We haven't, and the Ada County Assessor's Office is also going to have to change all of those zoning districts for those particular parcels as well. And then, as I mentioned to you, we are in the comprehensive plan update as well, so just keep that in mind. But again, this is meant to align with how it's written in the comprehensive plan, too, and should not affect that if this were to go into effect. Now, the other request is specific to our R-15 dimensional standards. And currently, I just want to give you a little bit of context on this particular change and why it came forward from the applicant. As you recall, this was continued out for several months, and the main purpose was to get this one caught up, to marry up with the residential name change or the map symbol change that I just shared with you. Essentially, what's happened is the applicant came before you, got approval of an East Ridge project, if you recall, in Movado Village. you recall, in Movado Village. And what that is, is a cluster development with central open space and a centralized amenity package. So the yards themselves, the homes that are built on those lots, don't necessarily have any yards, per se. All of those amenities and open space are centralized for all residents to use, and all the maintenance of that particular development are maintained by one HOA. What we realized is, as they came forward and tried to get building permits, they realized that the code didn't really speak to how to apply the setbacks to developments that access a public street and/or common driveways. Traditionally, what staff has done is, when someone comes in with a common driveway, code tells us that we get an exhibit. They're supposed to show us how those homes fit on that lot to ensure that those homes meet established setbacks of that R15 district. Again, we found out that there's a little bit of a difference of opinion and interpretation on how that is applied, and that's why the applicant thought they wanted to bring this forward. And just clarify on the record and in code how they think these setbacks should be applied. So the graphic before you this evening shows the new setbacks that the applicant's proposing. Again, these aren't currently in code. This is something that we discussed with the applicant at length and spent a lot of staff time on it, to be quite honest with you, with the applicant, and trying to find a solution. So a couple things is, those particular projects that they've had entitled currently and are under construction and constructing homes as we currently speak, those particular projects all have private streets and they're gated communities. So these specific changes, again, wouldn't apply to an R15 development that was a typical traditional subdivision. So if it was a 5,000-square-foot lot and it was still zoned R15, you'd still have the front yard, two side yards and a rear yard. These proposed changes are mainly meant to coincide with those specific developments that have access to a common driveway and/or a private street. The applicant did provide an exhibit. I'm trying to demonstrate how that would work, and staff is also recommending some changes to, or proposing for you this evening. Oh, here, the graphic on the left-hand side shows how the setbacks would apply as proposed by the applicant. You can see a zero-foot setback or a three-foot setback. Again, they're asking for a one-and-a-half-foot setback for the homes as a, from the common driveway. And then, anything along a private street would still be 10 feet, which is consistent with an R8 and R15 zone today. So again, as far as street frontage, they're fine with a 10-foot setback. There's not a change there. I think that's a good thing to have. That's concerns with, and again, they've given you some aerial photography to kind of demonstrate what that would look like in the real world. What we're concerned with with some of these setbacks, and I think we've called that out in the staff report, is that currently, the City of Meridian does not have drainage or grading ordinance in effect. We rely on the building code to tell us how to handle that. The applicant hasn't really showed staff how this would work with a three-foot setback if it was the entire boundary of the development. And so, just bringing that up to you, we don't know how that's going to work, and hopefully, the applicant can elaborate a little bit more for you on that. And what we're also not in favor of is the one-and-a-half-foot setback from the common driveway. You can see in that lower right-hand corner here, you can see where that house does project closely to that common driveway. Now, keep in mind, their proposal is not to have the entire facade be one-and-a-half feet from the common drive. Their proposal is for no more than 50% of the facade be located within that setback, at that one-and-a-half-foot setback. Staff is recommending that it just be a three-foot setback in its entirety. The other change that I want to point out to you is the requirement for the 12-foot along the perimeter. So, for example, the applicant, if they were going to have these cluster homes, anything that was along the perimeter or adjacent to a single-family home development or traditional subdivision, would still have that adequate separation and setback from those adjacent residents, so it would transition or provide that blend. I also mentioned to you that, as part of this amendment, because staff, when we were working with the applicant, we were concerned with really no yards for anyone to, private open space, right? I mentioned to you, there's an amenity package, there's central open space. How are these folks supposed to enjoy their living space and still have some privacy? And so, the applicant did indulge staff and added a footnote here that they said, every home that takes advantages of those setbacks would have to provide a minimum of 120 square-foot patio. And that's pretty consistent with our multifamily standards. Require that as part of that approval. However, it's only 80 square feet for multifamily development. So the applicant stepped up and actually proposed more patio, private open space, if you will, for the single-family homes. Now, I would mention to you, and these are some of the conversations that we had with the applicant as well, is the amount of staff time that it would take to verify that every one of these homes are meeting this requirement. So that will take, if these are approved, that will put additional time on staff to review this to make sure that they're meeting all of this criteria. And lastly, staff is also recommending one additional change to the applicant's proposal, and that is that when they actually depict a zero-lot line, that they actually build an attached home at that property boundary. We don't want the applicant to just pick and choose which setbacks applies to their development. It's either a three-foot setback or a zero-foot setback with an attached home. And that's what footnote number five shows in this graphic. Again, with all the public testimony, I know the last time I looked before I came in, I saw at least 45, at least part of the public record had signed up in opposition of this particular application. I don't know if Chris has anything that he would like to add before I conclude my presentation and stand for any questions.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, 120 people signed in in opposition. Five indicated wishing to testify, which, of course, you'll get to, but there were 120, and then emails have continued to come in throughout the evening as well.
Madam Chair, member of the commission, again, staff is recommending approval of the text amendment with the modifications in section six of the new staff report, and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Just one question. Sorry, just one question. On that last chart that you were showing us, all of the items that are in blue are what's proposed additions. None of those things are in the code currently. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the items in blue are the proposal from the applicant, yes, and they are not in code. The red are staff's recommended changes.
Great. Thank you. All right. Would the applicant please come forward?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Lauren Bailey. My address, work address, is 4824 West Fairview Avenue. Good evening, and thank you for hearing our request tonight. Do we have our PowerPoint? Sorry, I thought we had it set up. Well, I don't need it for the first part, so I'm just going to go ahead and continue while they get it going. As staff indicated, we're discussing two different issues tonight, both related to the city code. Even though both are dealing with zoning designations, they're really two separate requests. So I'm going to cover the zoning code name change first, and I don't know how you want to handle it, if you want to do questions then or if you want to wait till the end, but I'll pause and we can talk about that. Before you tonight, we're really just trying to add clarity to an otherwise confusing area of the city code. As staff indicated, you know, a lot of letters have come in from residents, and I think it just goes to show how confused folks are. And we're not trying to make this more difficult, we're trying to find a solution. And we want to talk about the ways in which Meridian City Comprehensive Plan and City Code work in conjunction with one another, but it's important to note that they're separate documents. And tonight, we're really focused on the code, not on the comprehensive plan, which is being updated. So I'm going to begin and discuss these dimensional standards. As Bill indicated, we've been working with staff for well over a year on this. We've had meetings, we've gone back and forth. We've thought about coming in, and then we changed our, we thought about waiting a little bit, and it's gone back and forth, and it just, as time goes on, it seems to be more and more of a confusing topic. So we began working on this long before the comp plan update had been undertaken. The changes that we're requesting do not have any bearing on a comprehensive plan update. It's interesting to note that the very reason that we've brought this before you tonight was to help provide clarity to the neighborhood, or to the neighboring property owners and public in general. The letters the city has received in response to our application tonight have proven our point that the current naming convention is confusing and needs to be updated. As the staff report suggests, the City Council changed the zoning code a few years ago and removed the density requirement from residential districts within the Unified Development Code. This idea, the idea was that it would allow the comprehensive plan to dictate the density on specific properties, and city code would provide the dimensional standards only. So it separated those two issues. In theory, this was a good way to allow the two documents to work together. The problem today is that the current naming of the zoning districts still reflects the old code and causes confusion about density. To illustrate the point, I want to bring up, this is the agenda from tonight's meeting. So prior to our meeting, you heard two residential subdivisions that came in. Jocelyn Park was just under two units per acre, but it's in an R8 zone. So you can see the confusion that happens here. You've got neighbors thinking, well, they can do, they're doing eight units per acre, when really, they're only using that for dimensional standards. And that's especially true in the Rockberry Townhomes. It's an R15 zone, but it only has 7.8 units per acre. So there's a big discrepancy between the name of the zone and how many units are actually being applied for. So it's important to note that both these developments are in zones that reflect the dimensional standards only. That zone does not reflect the density. Real quickly, this is just a little graphic to show, we've got comprehensive plan on one side, we've got zoning code on the other side. So again, the comprehensive plan tells you you're in a medium-density residential zone or area. You've got a maximum density that's called out of eight units per acre. You go to the zoning code in an R15, ask for an R15 zone for the dimensional standards, but you're still, your net is less than the eight units per acre. The zoning codes, R2 through R40 names, simply do not correlate to density as they did in the past. Our request before you tonight is strictly an issue of changing the naming so it is less confusing for everyone involved. We understand that a change can be difficult. Yes, it's going to require some work for staff, and yes, Ada County is going to have to make some changes. But our understanding is those are doable things. It's not impossible, and just because it's hard, in our opinion, doesn't mean it's the wrong thing to do. Staff is in agreement that there needs to be a change, as Bill said. Some of these, you know, when we've gone back and forth, staff's brought up some concern about the nomenclature that we put forward about RA, RB, RC. We're not saying that that's necessarily the right answer. They've also proposed some naming, and we've had some discussion with staff, but it was getting close to the hearing. I don't think we've really come to an agreement on what would be best. What we would really like to do with your approval tonight is meet somewhere with staff before the City Council hearing, try and come up with some more options on that naming, and let council decide what really is best for the code. So with that, Madam Chair, Commissioners, if you'd like, we can do questions on that right now or wait till the end. I don't know what you'd like to do.
I think we can just wait till the end.
Okay. But he's good. Okay. So I'm going to move on to item number two. In this one, we are looking at a specific code. We're looking at the, or a specific zone. We're looking at the R15 zone specifically. This also has to do with the zoning code, but it's the actual dimensional standards within the R15 zone. In working through design and construction of a couple recently-approved developments, as Bill had brought up, it's become clear that the R15 zone, it doesn't have enough setbacks to fit all of the situations. And even though when we submitted plans for our preliminary plat and went through the process with Planning and Zoning and City Council, we showed detailed plans, but when staff actually goes out to actually look at this and does it fit in the building permit process, there got to be a lot of questions and a lot of concerns came up. And the fear was, we didn't want to do something that wasn't, you know, wasn't in the code. Staff wants something to fall back on to make sure they're doing things correctly, and we're in agreement with that. So that's why we're here tonight. We're talking about setback requirements for projects that specifically utilize private streets. So this is not for every project in the R15 zone. It's, I'm not going to say always, because I don't think there's an always in any of this, but typically, you're talking about a gated community that has private streets that is enclosed to itself. So we've worked with staff, and we've talked about, as Bill said, different ideas, different ways to go about this. And we're just trying to make this easier and more streamlined for both the city and for development in general. And in the future, everybody will know what the rules are, and it'll be easier to move through this process. So I've kind of numbered each one of these on your screen, and so I'm going to talk through them one at a time. And the first thing I want to point out is these changes are not changing the density in any way in the zone, and they're not changing the minimum lot sizes. That's not something we're trying to change tonight. So, under the first heading, "Street Setbacks for Garages," under item number one, we've just added "Private Street." And as you see, it's still a 20-foot setback, just as a local street would be. So we've just added that heading so that it's clearer for staff as they review these. They know what the answer is. They're not going, "Well, this isn't a local street, it's a private. How do we apply this?" It's clear. Number two is the same issue, but on a common driveway, we've also got 20 feet from a garage setback. So we'll move down to the next heading, which is setbacks for the living area. So again, on a private street, we're 10 feet. On a local street, we're the same, 10 feet. Common driveways, this is where, as Bill brought up, we proposed something, we proposed a one-and-a-half-feet to three-feet setback from a common driveway. And that one-and-a-half would be for, we said 40% or less of that side of the home. I think Bill said 50. We can make 40 work. We're just trying to provide some undulation in those homes and not have just a straight wall. So that's why we suggested that. So we'll move to, excuse me. So item number five, this is not changed. We just add, staff thought it was a good idea, and we agreed to add "Public Street" to the rear setback, so it clarifies that that's 12 feet. So then, we move to number six, or, excuse me, I think I just, yeah. So then, we go to the "Private Street" setback and feed on number six. So number seven. So where we have, currently, we have attached homes. So there's zero-lot-line homes. We could have attached, in this particular case, on number seven, in the rear setback. What we're asking is, we want to say, okay, it can be zero, which we have today, and we have that approved, or it could be a three-foot setback. We're having a lot of potential homeowners' request to have, they don't want the attached structures. We're attaching four units together. They would prefer to have detached homes. And so, adding the three-foot would allow us to do that on the rear setback. So where these are four-pack attached, it would allow a three-foot, basically, not all the way around, but on the two sides. So we're just asking for that to be consistent with the side yards for homes on, again, this is on private streets only. This does not affect any perimeter lots or any other lots that we would be abutting, anything outside of the subdivision. It would just be internal to this development. And on number eight, the exterior boundary, again, we would have 12 feet of setback on the exterior boundary of the entire development, just like we would have had to before. So that really hasn't changed. We've just added another line to clarify that. So that really hasn't changed, we've just added another line to clarify that. So again, as Bill stated, we did work with staff, we want to require that, that minimum, um, square footage of private usable open space for each residence. And so that's the footnote, um, at the 120 square feet. And then we, we don't have a, a problem with staff's recommendation on the final plat that, that we show the lot lines that are to be attached and the ones that won't be attached. Um, so we'll, w- we may have to, um, i- in the future, we'd need to delineate that beforehand, uh, before construction begins. So in, again, none of the proposed changes that you're seeing tonight would increase density. It's simply providing dimensional requirements to the code that did not exist before. We're trying to make this as simple for everyone involved as possible. We believe that these changes will help staff in the review process in providing clear and defined requirements. It will also aid in the design and construction process by providing, et cetera, rules for developers and builders to follow. We are asking for your recommendation to city council to add requirements to the R15 zone. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This time we will take public testimony. Chris, how many did you say are signed up?
There are five indicating they wish to testify. First is Susan Carnes.
Good evening again, I'm Susan Carnes, 55, 56, South Graffy Way. And I'm here speaking tonight on behalf of the Meridian Southern Rim Coalition. Uh, we've reviewed the proposed amendments and we wish to submit our opposition for the public record. We want the commission to carefully examine the context and optics of this application. Comp plans drive code and the two should align. Residents, for the last year and a half or two, have been expressed outrage at the city's numerous deviations from its existing comp plan. Council realizing the comp plan is outdated, has invested in an expensive comprehensive plan process in which it has promised stakeholders in writing, and I quote, "A robust and effective community outreach process," unquote. As a member of the steering committee for the new comprehensive committee, along with Chairwoman McCarville and in fact, the applicant, Mr. Conger of Devco, I'm especially baffled and confused by this application and its timing. In the last two steering committee meetings, we've had breakout groups and spent hours taking feedback from stakeholders that the city has made an excruciating effort to gather. We are analyzing it and we are trying to see what drives the vision for this city. We've had enormous maps of the city of Meridian at our last two steering committee meetings, and we have been asked in our breakout groups to discuss zoning and land use. I think that this application, if approved, sends a terrible mixed message when we are trying so hard to engage our citizens and restore public trust in the process. What's the rush? What's the urgency for what we perceive as substantial changes requested tonight? Why can't we allow our new comprehensive plan process time and protect its integrity by not making substantial changes? We support business that will elevate the quality of development or enhance public safety, but why in the world, this application? I'm going to, I'm just referring to staff report. Quote, "Typically code changes should occur after the adoption of a new comp plan. It's going to affect 39,000 parcels whose owners have not had notice of this application." Staff is concerned about runoff and drainage on affected R15 lots, they report. The city doesn't have an adequate grading and, and drainage ordinance, there's been an increase in the number of citizens complaining about this. Staff was hoping to have a discussion with UDC focus group for additional input and guidance, but the applicant didn't want to wait for the city timeframes. I understand, my three minutes are up, can I speak for the coalition and go for another moment or two?
I believe we need to have a raise of hands to do that. Who else here?
You have dozens of people that signed in online, so I, I would consider that, hands raised.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. I tried to make it brief, I'm not going to take 10 minutes. This is why we get so much feedback from our residents that they believe developers are driving growth and development in this city. So, we see no benefit in approving this application other than its benefit to the developer. And we will remind those in attendance and the commissioners that this application in approved will affect approved R15 developments, one of which, East Ridge Estates, is along the Southern Rim. Nearly every neighbor in nearby HOA opposed East Ridge, and now the developer can use a UDC amendment to further increase density without going back through the process of notifying neighbors and presenting his amended plan in public hearings. If PNC approves these dimensional standards, they will have the ability to construct a development of higher density significantly different than what was proposed and approved through public hearings, that our members are telling us is not transparency in government, that's circumventing due process. That scenario offends many of our members and we believe gives commissioners reason enough to deny this application. We do agree the present naming convention is confusing and we believe it needs to be overhauled to address Meridian's standing as a city of 100,000 plus. And we could support staff's naming amendment, however, we would prefer to support it after completion of the new comprehensive plan. If you're asking stakeholders to speak, then give them the respect of listening. While we agree that the city needs higher density housing to accommodate growth and the need for affordable housing, we believe the proposed R15 dimensional standards are best suited in certain zones and not citywide, and I say that to you also from the context of seeing some of the survey results that are coming in from stakeholders. However, we can't support any aspect of R15 dimensional standard, substantial, uh, UDC changes until after the new comp plan is approved. We believe planning and zoning should deny this application. By doing so, you'll take an enormous step toward return, restoring public trust in our city government, the comprehensive plan and the new comp plan process. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Greg Reynolds. Kimberly Juarez.
Good evening, Madam Chair Commissioners, my name is Sally Reynolds and I live at 1166 West Bacall Street in Meridian. So I'm going to make a couple of general comments, but they do apply to this amendment. So over the last couple of months, I've seen Nextdoor post the comp plan survey and corresponding website, which is encouraging residents to participate in planning the city's future. The residents who participate in these surveys obviously feel strongly about the future of Meridian and take time, um, to, and care enough about it to take time to give feedback. When local government asks for input and then turns around and makes a unilateral decision, which undermines that process, it breeds distrust and even worse apathy. I can't tell you how many times I've heard, "Why are you even trying? They don't listen to us. The developers are in the city and there's nothing we can do to stop it. It's a done deal for why try? And my favorite growth is coming, like it or not, so if you don't like it, move." My response to the last one is, "I love Meridian, my kids love Meridian, and we want it to continue to be a great place to live. And yes, growth is coming, but it can be controlled, smart growth managed by a local government that understands the concerns of residents. A government that can balance the creation of jobs and housing without sacrificing our quality of life. Please respect the residents and wait for that process to finish. The comp plan and UDC go hand in hand. Over the last year and a half, I've testified on several applications, especially in the North Meridian area. Time and time again, the residents are told that the comp plan is not a legally binding document and merely a guide for the city. What is it supposed to guide? The Meridian City Code. This code is what the developers are held to. Please let the comp plan guide the UDC. As you heard the applicant himself say, they fall back on the UDC and that's what we count on, and that's what needs to be defined. In regards to this particular amendment, the current naming convention, while it may not be tied directly to the type of housing and numbers of dwelling, it at least gives residents an idea of what level of housing density a developer is planning. The RA, RB designation structure obscures an applicant, the applicant's proposed land use. It further muddies the waters on what is already a very difficult process to understand, especially if you're not in the land use industry, and most of us aren't. The naming convention proposed by staff is much more easily understood and they have some expertise in this area. As a Meridian city resident, I appreciate when my local government leaders exhibit integrity, accountability and transparency. The A, B, C, I don't, I don't understand how that corresponded anyway. So how does this add value to Meridian? Well, as far as I can tell, it doesn't. It's favoring the developers and their profits and not engaging the public at all. Um, I was going to read some quotes from Nextdoor, which were given from Casey Emery asking for feedback today for the town hall meeting, but I will just close. So believe it or not, I've learned a lot in the last 18 months. I understand growth will come and there's a need for mixture of housing, but this is not an amendment that should be considered right now, given the comp plan revisions. I firmly believe it would rarely ever be in Meridian's best interest to have minimal setbacks and possibly cramry units into the area. If it is, let developers prove that and approve it on a case-by-case basis. Please protect the integrity of the public process, make it the exception rather than the default, and please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for a visual, here is, there's three feet.
Last sign-in is Robert Nielsen.
My name is Robert Nielsen, I live at 3508 East Quinn Drive in Meridian. Thanks for the opportunity to testify and I thank you for the, for the staff comments, it's clarified some things. Clearly, this is a, uh, something that is in process, since some of the information that was shown tonight was not on the website a few days ago when I looked to see what was happening tonight. In any case, I want to recommend that PNC not approve the proposed text amendment to the residential, uh, naming district. Uh, the current zoning designations indeed, as me, as mentioned, are not precise indicators of what I always thought as a resident were maximum density for the zone. And that's because the city code has been changed, as was said, to specify dimensional standards like minimum prop, pr- pr- pardon me, minimum property size per dwelling unit setbacks. However, while those designations, if they're assumed to be maximum units per area, are not precise, the current residential zoning, zoning districts do reasonably correspond to the maximum allowable density. Last August, when this first came up, and I saw it on the city website, I went through and looked at the 2018 city projects. And of the 37 residential projects that were on that list, if you go through the applications, there were only four of them that exceeded the design, the, what I assumed was the maximum residential dens- density for that zoning. And three of those four were things, were, were, uh, exceeded the limits by amounts that were very small zoning areas. So, uh, while they're not precise, they're, they're reasonable estimates of what would be a maximum allowed, uh, zoning, uh, dwelling units per, per area. Um, the city of Meri- Meridian residents are already at a disadvantage to understanding the zoning process and the development process, it's very complex. Now, I, I appreciate the effort to provide more transparency to this process by changing R2, R4, R8, et cetera, into RA, RB, RC, because that does help me a lot. Not at all. It actually decreases transparency, obviously, although the staff recommendations to have, have names that are more associated with the comprehensive plan makes a lot more sense, because at least the generic, um, description of those, of those densities tells the resident something that A, B, C, and D does not. If, if changes are needed to the residential designations to correspond to the changes that have been made in city code, I would recommend, as has been stated, that it be done after the comprehensive plan is approved and that the changes that are made not be RA, B, C, D, and E, but something that corresponds to what's in the comprehensive plan. Further in regard to the, uh, other, uh, proposal in the application, I'm concerned about the setbacks that are described. Uh, it's been stated that reducing setbacks to zero and three feet will not increase density. Well, that's kind of ludicrous, because if you keep a standard building size and you decrease the setbacks, you allow more buildings per u- per unit area. Now, it may not exceed the number of units in a density designation like in R15 at 15 units per building, and in fact, when you look at the 37 applic- applications last August, many of them are well below what the maximum will be applied by the current zoning designation. So what reducing setbacks would do would be to increase the densities to more approach what the maximum would be for the current zoning, uh, designations. Finally, when you talk about a one and a half foot setback near a public street, I get concerned about safety. Now, maybe people don't speed on private streets, but they certainly speed where I do, and one and a half feet is not very far for a car to go off the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, is that everyone that was signed up?
That was everybody that signed in.
Is there anybody else present here that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Thank you, my name's Glenn Nielsen, I'm at 2135 West Sunny Slope Drive, N.I.
Speak your name again.
Glenn Nielsen, N.I.E.L.S.N. I'm at 2135 West Sunny Slope Drive. And, uh, just wanted to come down tonight to, on this one issue. If your staff has items that they need to have clarified, then, you know, it shouldn't be passed right now. You know, they have to, they have to make up their minds, go through the process. They were talking, well, we don't know if it's going to be, uh, uh, what is it, three feet or zero, whatever, and how's that going to work for, with like utilities or whatever? So they need to figure that out. And then if you're going to make these changes and you say you're going to pass that on, Ada County has to, uh, make the changes, well, you can't direct Ada County to make the changes. So that was just where I'm, uh, just at. So, uh, I just say, no, not tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi again, uh, Shelley Luffer, 70, 30, North Sienna Glenway, Meridian. Um, I agree with the applicant that, um, this topic is confusing. It is. Um, I've been involved with several of these projects and I still don't understand it, but I'm also not a developer. But at this point, um, this appears to be just a way to manipulate setbacks in order to increase density, as the previous gentleman just stated. You know, we, we get that code provides dimensions, comp plan provides zoning, and these don't always talk to each other very well. But you know what? Now's our opportunity to make these match, make them ma- modify so that they do talk to each other in a more complete and straightforward way. Um, if we're modifying that comp plan, then, then make it all work. Make it easy enough for people to understand. It, it, it doesn't seem like it would be that hard to do. And renaming it RA, RA, that's just, that's an insult frankly. I think the graphic presented, uh, by the applicant actually shows the problem. When you get down to the bottom and it says net greater than eight units, this is a subtle manipulation of the comprehensive plan. If you show on a comprehensive plan that it's going to be eight units per acre, that's what it ought to be, not greater than eight units per acre when it ends up being built out. You know, as someone who is directly affected by lack of following the comp plan, because I live across the way from the Costco that may be going in, um, this is not the right time to make this change. And if we are going to all this trouble and spending all this money to change the comp plan, then make it easy for people to understand. to change the comp plan, then make it easy for people to understand. It doesn't have to be dumbed down to a point where an eighth grader can understand it. But, you know, we're all adults. We can read and we can understand that. So, you know, and there are some parts with the applicant's, you know, requests that do make sense. I think for certain types of setbacks are appealing for certain types of developments, like fifty-five-plus communities, for people who want to retire in one level homes, but don't want a huge yard, you know, that may make sense for them. But a ten by twelve patio for a family home? I mean, there is veal and larger pens than that. So that doesn't make sense. So changing this for the entire city, it does not make sense. It needs to be very specific, and it needs to be shown in the comp plan that way. I think that the full impact of these changes are not completely understood, not only by citizens, but by staff, as indicated in the report, and their recommendation to make further changes. And at this point, the only beneficiary appears to be the applicant. As citizens, we're not really feeling heard. And this appears to be an undermining of the comprehensive plan review process. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Doug Wheeler, 2402 East Deconic Drive, Meridian. Just wanted to speak to the commission. I didn't have anything really prepared tonight, but I'd just been listening. And I've been able to come the last two or three years to P and Z meetings and so forth. Just observations, I guess, is what I'm, I'm thinking of. We talked about the comprehensive plan. And I know when I moved here about nine years ago, I looked into a lot of that. When I started seeing things happen in Meridian, I kept saying they don't quite seem to match up. And I know that's a concern that's being worked on. I came to the area too, thinking, look at all this land and area that we have here. And then I just started seeing houses and everything being squeezed in. So obviously, density is a big, big concern. And I've been hearing that the last couple, three years. I know that our infrastructure and roads are really being pushed because of that. This reclassification, I guess you'd say, I think really needs to be looked at very carefully because that can have some big effect on, on what the future's going to be. We have a lot of situations where we have seen maybe track records of various developers that are always asking for things to be squeezed in more so there's a little bit more profit possibly. But you as a commission do also need to look out for Meridian. And I do urge you to, to look towards that, because that's, the tax dollar isn't the only thing here. People want other things. I think our biggest concern is who's really driving the bus? Are the developers? Or is the P and Z looking at things and saying, you know, we need to really take a good look on things here? Because this is a city that's really booming. And some of these squeezings in here are making it so that people are starting to be concerned about, do I really want to settle in Meridian now? Because I have seen what's happening. Observations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like, please come forward?
My name is Mary Affleck. I live at 6519 South Rapprench Lane in Meridian. And I just think this is really sneaky, actually, to come in through the back door to increase the density in a very rural area. We live right across the street from the subdivision that is supposedly going in for the fifty-five plus. And we have sixteen acres and a park now next to us. And it sounds like a fire station. So not too unhappy with that, but not very happy about the density that's being packed in. The one thing that I wanted to tell you, though, was that we just got word from a friend. She texted me and told me that the meeting was tonight and that what they were discussing, and several other friends. And so we signed in as quickly as we could, but there are several others that got shut out because it started. So I just wanted you to know that there are several other people, two different text groups that are, yeah, text groups that were discussing this and would want to sign in but couldn't, and that are against it. Just mainly, the main thing, I don't know that has anything to do with the naming of it, but it has to do with the density and just the numerous amount of people that are coming in into our area, which, I don't know. We love Idaho. I was born in Boise and, and reared here my whole life. We're retired Air Force and have lived all over the world. And the places that we have loved, well, that we came back to was Idaho when we were done. Because it isn't California and it's not England. Although England has a pretty good plan, they don't build in their countries at all. It's designated country and you just rebuild the cities, so the cities don't fail. Also, Korea, where it is packed in. And we have lived in the big cities all around the world. So that's the only thing that I have to say is that I love Meridian. And that's why I'm, the only reason I would stand up and say anything, because I love Idaho. Thanks.
Please encourage those individuals to send in communications to the clerk's office and/or come to the city council hearing and testify there as well.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else? At this time, would the applicant please like to come forward?
Madam Chairperson, commissioners, just wanted to touch on a couple items quickly. You know, I think everybody who got up here testified about density. And the two developments that, that Bill brought up, both of those are already approved. They have development agreements that set the number of units. This is not going to change any of the density of those units. Those projects are approved with mostly attached products. So we're actually asking for the three feet to detach those products. So we're, we're going the opposite direction from what a lot of the testimony we just heard. Those are fifty-five and over communities. And, and we have focused the open space and, and areas for those folks into one place and provided gated communities that, that that demographic is looking for. We, we agree, it's not, it's not right for all of Meridian. But in specific instances, we believe it is, and that's why we're here tonight. We, we heard testimony that, that there is a lot of confusion. And I think that's still the case. We're, you know, we're here tonight trying to make that better. And may, you know, that, that's the goal. We, we heard comments about public streets. These, these changes aren't for public streets or for private streets. And then we heard a lot of comment about, you know, the comp plan and, and how it should drive code. And, and definitely, I believe, you know, we believe that's true. The current comp plan process, I think if you ask staff right now, they're planning on about a nine months to a year before that comes to a close. You know, I've, I've been through these processes several times in Treasure Valley, Meridian, Ada County, Boise, timeframes to, it, it's one of those things that takes a long time. And then once it's even decided upon, it takes time to get it published and get it ratified and get it approved by council and, and Planning and Zoning Commission. So we're not trying to do an end run around anybody. We just feel like there's, there are issues today. And we're trying to put something in place to take care of the next year, year and a half. And, and really, following a comp plan amendment, yeah, there will probably be changes to the code. And at that time, if these things need to be revisited, they, they should be. And we agree with that. But, but tonight, we're asking for your recommendation to city council for approval. Any questions?
I have a few questions for you. I know that you as developers understand the zoning. No, no matter what they're named, you understand the zoning. So I'm curious as to how that, the name change really does benefit you.
Well, okay. I'll, I'll go back to the example we talked about in, in the presentation. You know, you've got projects and we're submitting an application and the current zone is R eight. Or we're asking for an R fifteen to get those dimensional standards we're talking about tonight. But our density, I mean, even in the two projects we're talking about, we're under, we're around five to six units per acre. But we're at an R fifteen zone to get the dimensional standard. And so what happens is then the publics all are confused because they think we're asking for fifteen units per acre, when that's really not the case. We're, we're, you know, between four and five or five and six units per acre. So that density doesn't translate. It creates a lot of confusion. And we get a lot of people coming and testifying that, that they believe we're developing R fifteen. There's also concern that when we, when we get a project approved with an R fifteen zone, that somehow we can come back, come back and backdoor in increased density. And we've, we've had discussions with that with city council just in the last year about that concern. That they did, they agreed with what we were doing. They thought it was fine, but the R fifteen zone concerned them because they were afraid somebody would come later and try and change it. And so that's, that's the concern. That's why we want to change this. We want it to be consistent. And, and I understand what some of the constituents were saying or some of the citizens, that R A is maybe more confusing to them than R fifteen. I, I get that. But it, it, it still doesn't solve the problem. And so I agree with staff. We need to come up with, with a name that does, that does relay what, what the density is. But doesn't, doesn't provide that fear factor, I guess, so to speak, of this is going to be fifteen units per acre when really it's five.
And can you take us through more clearly what the difference would look like for you when you make an application for a private street with the existing process? Having the distances specifically set? Help us understand what those, how that looks different for you and why you're making an application for that? If you, you still have the right to apply for that currently. It's just that you want that stated because?
Well, I, I think the, the way we would have to apply for that currently would go through a PUD process. And, and I, I don't, I'm not saying that's a bad idea. Meridian's current PUD process doesn't allow us a lot of opportunities. There's some things that we have to provide. We have to show that we've got, you know, that there is a, a hindrance or something because of natural features or some of the other things that, that are required in a PUD that make that difficult. It's another area that we've talked to staff about, and, and I think Bill would agree with me, needs to be changed in the code. But that's a, a much bigger undertaking, the PUD process. It, it is an option, but we, we feel it's much cleaner to come in and show, you know, just fix the code so that we can come in directly and not have to go through a PUD process to do that. So that's why we're asking for this, to, to make that clarity. Also, it makes it easier, like I said, for staff in their review because they can go and say, oh, we do have a requirement for, for private street, whereas, whereas there wasn't one today. So instead of them trying to figure out, well, should we just say this is like a local street? They, they actually have that delineation that says, no, we have a private street setback. We know what that is. We can approve this drawing.
Okay, and can you also? Sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Okay, I think, I think that sufficiently. I just wanted to, I understand all of the requests that are being made. I wanted to know how it's affecting you, the applicant specifically. Oh, I remember what I was going to ask. Why the timing now? I mean, you know, you've already heard, there's a lot of concerns about. I understand the comp plan's role in this and the, the code's role in this. But to me, it would make more sense if this was all rolled out at one time with the comp plan so that the public is sort of digesting these changes at the same time. And, and just from a, a public understanding, it would make more sense to have all those changes made at the same time.
I, I guess I want to point out that there wasn't some grand plan here that we decided this was a better time to do this. We, we've been talking about this with staff for, for over a year about the, the issue. We've brought it up at city council as part of our presentations, trying to educate and say, look, th- these are the situation. We thought that was an approach that maybe would grab hold and, and help the decision body. I think in some ways it has, but in other ways it hasn't. And so as we were working through this, we really, this spring, decided, you know, we really need to submit an application. But we wanted to work with staff. We wanted to talk about the options. And, and all of this takes time, just as the comp plan takes time. There wasn't a, a, you know, we just had been moving forward with our process. We didn't, the comp plan then came up and got, started work on it. We, we didn't put those two together, I guess, to say one should happen first or we should wait. I, I think it's, I think though it is a bad idea to wait because the issue is here before us today. The comp plan, you know, will continue on for a year or so. And beyond that, then we're going to have to change the code, which could continue on for just as long. I mean, so you're talking, this could be two or three years from now before this issue gets visited. And we felt like it's, it's, it's at the forefront today. It's an issue. It needs to be handled today.
Any other questions?
One more follow-up.
Mr. Holland?
I have a follow-up question. What are your thoughts on staff's red line changes to your, your suggestions here?
In, just in general, or which, do you have one specifically that?
For the, for the naming convention and then for any of the other recommendations they've made off of what you've put forward?
On the naming convention, I, I, I know, I understand what they tried to do. I understand what we tried to do. We, we were just, we thought about it for a while and said, you know what? This is complicated. Let's put out something simple. You've got to then go read what is R A. You've got to go read the actual text and know what that is, rather than just hearing R fifteen and knowing it's fifteen or guessing, I guess, that it's fifteen. So you've got to actually read the text, which I think would be helpful for everyone. But, you know, staff's saying we're, we're going to change it to more directly correspond to the comp plan. I think that makes sense, except for the comp plan will allow usually for one or two or even sometimes three of these items within one comp plan designation area. So I think that will provide additional confusion. I don't want to get into that tonight because I think it's, I think it's a deep hole to go down. I think we need to spend a little more time with staff before we go to council and come up with some better options, i- is what we would prefer to do. We didn't know about staff's comments until, you know, early in the week. And so that didn't give us a lot of time to, to comment back on that. So not, not that that's anybody's fault, just I, I think that could take, you know, a week or two of comments to come up with maybe something better.
Any additional questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley?
Bill, can you go back to the example of the, the homes? So looking at this, I, I have to admit, I would much prefer an attached product because I don't see how this will actually work with a three-foot setback on three sides, or at least two sides. I, I've seen it on the side lot, yard and stuff like that. And, you know, landscaping wise, most times they just do a, a rock. But, you know, if, if you have a fence between there and you're trying to get into that back corner, it's, it's almost impossible to do that or even to work on the side of your house. I, I have to admit, I'm a little, you know, I guess I'm a little concerned about a back setback at three feet based on that, just based on this light alone. And especially the one and a half on the, on the, against the, the driveway just because, you know, it wouldn't take much for someone to pull in and hit the side of the house. So I, I guess if you can walk through how something like this would actually, you know, look out in real life, that's, I'm having a hard time looking at that. And associated with that, I know most times with the three-foot setbacks, you, you have no eaves. And so at this point, what do you do for an eve on the back of the house? You know, do you not have an eve? How do you take care of the drainage? That type of stuff. Because, you know, even in our area where we have big lots, we still have problems with drainage.
Madam Chairperson, Commissioner Yearsley. So I'm going to start backwards to forwards there. We'll start with drainage. This particular product in the, in the fifty-five and over gated communities and the two that we've discussed, these are very stringently planned out. Everything from drainage, each and every roof drain, everything's planned out. If we've got a low area, there's going to be an area drain to take care of that. This isn't your standard single-family residential development where, you know, the lots are just graded away from the home and, and drainage goes where it goes. This is very well thought out. It has to be because there's not enough room to do anything else. The second part on fencing, there is no fence, interior fencing in these communities. Everything's open. All of the maintenance and landscaping is maintained by the HOA. So nobody needs a lawn mower. Nobody's taking care of their own lawn. It's all done for them. And that's, that's what, you know, in our research and in our questioning potential buyers, that's what people are looking for. They want a, a place they can- They want a, a place they can retire, that they don't have to worry about the maintenance. They can go to Arizona anytime they want to and not have to worry about keeping up the yard or watering the plants. That's all taken care of for them. That goes for the exterior maintenance as well. Onto the eaves, this is a different product than what you've seen at Solterra and Solvi and Verado. Um, this, this is a product that is again, very well designed. There's a lot of, that goes into each one of these homes and there are eaves on these, on this product. Fire-rated eaves that, that would be required in the three-foot setback. So really what the issue here is, is finding, or providing more space between homes or opening up areas, that's not what these folks are looking for. They have a large meeting area, social area. There's a project similar to this in Boise and the folks who live there, they, they love it. They, they all go to the central meeting, um, area. There, there's a clubhouse. They have potlucks every Friday night. Everybody knows everybody's name. No-for-sale signs ever go up in there because when somebody moves out, somebody's got a friend they want to move in. It's all word of mouth. Um, we, we think this is a great product for, for the community. And, and we assumed that the attached product would, would sell fine. And, and it, it, it will, but we're getting a lot of people asking for a detached product and that's, that's part of the reason we're here. But the other part is to clean up, um, the zoning issues for staff as well.
So what do you do about windows, um, between the two? I mean, given that close, you know, you may want a window for light, but you know, if you're, I mean, you're, you're right there looking at each other.
I, I mean, you, if you were attached, there'd be no window, right?
No, I, I, and I realize that. I just, so that's what I'm going to-
So yeah, you're going to have some windows on those sides, not as many because like you said, and, and things are going to be staggered. There's, these product, they're, they're built as a, as a group. It's all been thought out. So you're not, you don't have two windows staring at each other. You don't have those issues because it's all been thought through and designed specifically for this product in this location.
So I'm going to go back. So I understand that your products are, are maybe well thought out and stuff like this, but how do we protect the public from those people who haven't thought that out? That's, that's where I, I, I come in because you get some that, oh, I just can do this and I want to do this. And then at the end of the day, we're left with a mess. And so, uh, you know, my concern is, is having enough teeth to protect the public against, against that type of a development, I guess.
And I think to, I think to clarify that, when we initially met with staff, that was their concern as well. And that's why we've added so many more items to the R-15 for the private street section specifically, was to address those issues, to provide the, the open space per unit, to provide all the different setbacks from each side and from the common drive, all of those specific requirements so that it would hem, hem in the next person that tries to do a similar development. They will have those requirements to, to keep that, um, consistent.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for item number H-20180059?
So moved.
Second.
It is a moved and seconded to close the public hearing for H-20180059. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Motion carries. I'd like to request a five-minute break. So let's take five minutes, use the restroom, come back here shortly.
Meet what's currently being proposed and we see that all the time. That being said, you know, and maybe Bill might be able to answer that is, do we see out of the comp, you know, because I'm sure a lot of this is out of the zoning districts and out of the comp plan, do we anticipate the low density, the medium density, medium high, medium, you know, high density names changing, you know, I would actually consider more of an R4 as a medium density and maybe the R40 as an extreme density, but you know, that's personally me, but you know, that would be my only concern is if we get through all this process and something changes on the zoning map or on the, you know, coming out of the comp plan that we don't match per se. That being said, I don't think we're going to see that significant of a change, that it shouldn't be that big of an issue. So I could support that application, portion of the application to make those changes. And the fear of changing the, all the lots, the different ones, we're going to have to do it sometime, you know, so when, when do you make that, make these changes? So with the dimensional standards, that one, I struggle to keep, put my head around and how that actually works. I understand where you guys are coming from and it helps you and, you know, with specific areas. My concern is how we protect those individuals and have enough teeth and I, and at this point, I don't have that level of comfort that we have the teeth in there to make sure we have a good product based on these dimensional standards. So I'm not quite sure where, you know, how we want to proceed with this at that point, you know, I'm kind of at a, do we continue it and talk about it further? I'd be curious to see what the rest of the commission thinks.
Madam Chair. So if you could go back to the first slide, Bill, that you have, we've had conversations for that the zoning code is confusing to people who don't have a planning background or who haven't worked in economic development or who don't understand development projects. And this was something that we've done a better job of putting this up at the beginning of every meeting. We started implementing this a few months back, maybe even longer than that ago, for the reason of trying to help people understand what the R2, R4, R8 actually means. And so this chart, I think, is really helpful in educating the public. When they come in for an application, they can see the agenda and they can look at and see R2 is kind of in that rural, but it's also in this low density. And so you can kind of see how it blends in there. I think this is a good start to explaining to public how we kind of see applications and what really fits in those zoning codes. Could we still do better? Yes, I think we could. I'm not opposed to changing the language on how we refer to some of those zones, but I do have some concerns as well as what was, what people were testifying is, why isn't this part of just kind of rolling out with a comprehensive plan? What's the urgency of having it done right now? I don't know that it, I feel like this kind of puts a little bit of a bandaid on it, having this chart that helps us kind of explain that to the public. I'd like to maybe see that change as part of the comprehensive plan rollout, but I'm worried that if we change it now and there might be something else that we add to the comprehensive plan that makes it more confusing, then you've got to change it twice rather than just waiting and doing it all at once. So that's my thought about that. I'm not opposed to changing it, but I want to make sure we do it at the right timing to make sure it makes sense for staff and to make sure it makes sense for that comprehensive plan committee and at least get some of their buy-in on their thoughts about this piece. On the other piece about changing some of the setbacks, I think you expressed it in some of your comments earlier. It's hard to put forward a change that we know maybe one developer could do well with putting together a good product, but we can't guarantee that all developers are going to do the same thing. And it's hard to approve a plan that comes from the request of one developer rather than a collaborative, staff-driven, committee-balanced proposal. So I guess I would prefer to have some deliberation from, from staff a little bit more on what they would like to see or have maybe some comprehensive plan committee input into this process or certainly more deliberation amongst ourselves on that. But I have some concerns with the way that that looks for some of the same comments that you've mentioned earlier. Commissioner Yearsley.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Wilson.
So yeah, I mean, I was thinking about this and in terms of process, I understand, you know, that you kind of initiate this process in the spring and now it's kind of coinciding and getting closer in proximity to the release of that comprehensive plan. And so I mean, I think from a timing standpoint, do you want to do this twice? Because more than likely on the naming conventions, we're going to have to do it twice. And I don't, I think I'd rather do it once now that I really think about it, even though I think that, I've been around long enough to know that there's a lot of confusion about the naming conventions and that discussion has, there's been a lot of discussion about how we change those. And I think that the option, that the revised option by staff makes a lot of sense, but then I don't want to tinker with it again in eight to 12 months or whenever that's coming. So that's kind of my thoughts on that. And then I, I completely agree on sort of that setback issue. I don't feel like I have a good enough grasp at this point in thinking through all the implications of it to kind of say, oh yeah, that, let's move that, let's kick that up to city council. I do want to make that clear to everybody. I mean, that would be the next step in the process. It would go to city council for approval. I think there was a little bit of confusion on that. In terms of our options, now obviously if we deny it, it would go to city council for their consideration. If we continue it, I mean, when would we continue it for considering the skepticism on the naming conventions, eight months from now, nine months from now? Is it just sitting out there to be determined? So I think we're going to have to probably deny it if that's where we're leaning. And that's, those are my thoughts at this time.
So just thinking about these, the private drives, the common driveways, I would anticipate that this would allow developers to create more developments using private drives. We don't, I, at least in the time that I've been here, I have not seen that to be a common thing. And just like the one that we had heard earlier that has that private drive, they're, they're not required to have sidewalks, they're, they're not required to be the width of a public street. And I think that if we set it up in such a way that it is easier for the developers to, they don't have to go through the PUD process to do this and that we're going to start seeing some additional applications on these small infill projects for these private roads and that we are going to create issues for, for our safety services. Obviously we'll continue to have conversations about enough parking in, in those kind of communities, in the communities where we're going to have the private roads and several common, common driveways. So while the applicant is saying that it, the intention is not to allow for communities with greater density and it does and it doesn't, I mean, I understand, in other words, they can't come in and ask for a larger density than R15 allows. So in that sense, they can't, but they can try to put additional units in a smaller space and so that it feels more dense, even if they haven't gone outside the parameters of that zone. And so, and then add a private road on top of that that's smaller without the requirement for sidewalks. And I just feel like we're creating an easier way for it to become safety issues, you know, just, just the things that we continually talk about and address every time we have an application that's, that's close together, where the residences are this close together. So I, as far as the naming goes, I completely agree with, with my commissioners that we could be doing this as a repeat. I really think if the intention of renaming the zones, if, as the applicant has stated, is for the purpose of public understanding, then, then let's do this with, in, with the comprehensive plan so that we're introducing that, because I know that this, that the city has a plan to introduce the comprehensive plan when it comes out to the public in a way that is, you know, that I think they've done a great job in getting public feedback. And I know that they will be rolling that out so the public will understand the comp plan. So, so why not then introduce names, new names for the zones at that time? I just think it makes more sense if the intention is for public understanding. I don't think, it's my opinion, that a year is going to make or break anything when it comes to this. And I think it will really be a lot easier on the public for us to do that at the same time. I know the developers understand the zones as they are currently and, and I don't disagree with, with changing the name. I think the names need changed. And, and I don't, and I think it would be fine for the applicant to meet with the city and go over those options of the names. I don't have any concern about them doing that. I think it's a fantastic idea to explore as many, as many options as we can, can consider to make the, make it clear for the public. I was wondering if, Bill, if there, I don't even know if this is something that has been analyzed or looked at, but what kind of, of cost and effort and timeframe is there on the city's part to make a name change like that? You noted several different places it needs to be changed in the code, but what does that look like for, I imagine that there's a significant cost to the city to do that and is, is the city prepared to do that? It sounds like they, you, the staff have already had discussions about it in the past. Is, should that be a factor for our consideration?
Madam Chair, members of the commission. Not, not necessarily. I mean, all of the changes are already in this staff report, so I've done them. The applicant has paid a fee for us to do that work and we've done that work. So all those sections have been addressed in the staff report. But again, if it's your desire to hold off or wait, you certainly have that as part of your purview tonight. You can approve a portion of it, deny all of it, continue it, whatever you need to do in order to make a decision on the application, there's, there's plenty of options for you this evening. Just let us know how you want it, how you want us to guide you and we'll get, we'll get you on the right path.
Okay. The applicant had mentioned that they'd had discussions with staff about the PUD process and it being complicated for these specific items with the private roads and the common driveways and had indicated that maybe the staff perhaps agreed that that is a complicated process for those specific items. Is, is that the case and can you shed some more light on that? And is there possibly another process or could that process be made more streamlined without agreeing to do, to make the code change in this way?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, we talked about multiple options. We talked about a variance. We talked about a planned unit development. We talked about them modifying their plat and losing lots so that they can fit their homes on the parcels. We talked about them attaching the homes and having zero lot lines and then a lot of these setbacks don't come into play and we can, we can get it to work with the current code. Again, you heard from the applicant, it is their desire to have detached product on these lots. And so in their minds, this seemed to be the least path of resistance for them to get, for the result they were going after this evening. I agree with the applicant. We don't do a lot of planned unit developments because a lot of times developers can fit their developments within the context of our code. The planned unit development is to have something innovative and creative and flex, and provide that flexibility to the developer, not necessarily be used to get out of dimensional standards of, of the zoning district in which they're applying for. It does come with more open space, more amenities. It comes with a mix of unit types that you need to be as part of the development. So there, there are some challenges and some hurdles to that ordinance that we didn't fully vet and said whether or not their Movado Village or their East Ridge Project would fit within the context of a PUD, but we did talk about that. And again, this was, seemed to be the logical conclusion that we came to is you can process code change and see if there's an appetite for that. Now, I will point out to you that the comprehensive plan, I don't, going back to Commissioner Yearsley's comment, I don't see us changing our land use designations in the comprehensive plan. That discussion's never come up, at least any knowledge to me, as, as I'm aware of. So I don't, again, I don't see that being out of context with the zoning ordinance when, if and when that goes into effect. But it does go to the point of the neighbor saying, let's, let's pause, let's look and see what's going on. And I bring that to your attention because, you know, we take it serious and I don't want the community to feel that they don't have a voice and they do. And that's why I'm glad they're here this evening.
Absolutely.
I want it to be transparent and I want you guys to make the best decisions. So that's why in my analysis of this zoning change, I tried to put it all in context for you, that there's other things that need to be considered here than just what the applicant's proposing. And so staff has not contacted the assessor's office and let them know this is coming. What will happen is if it's approved and ordinance gets sent to them and they get in their system and they do a quick query in GIS and they change the zoning. What residents may not understand is when they get their tax assessments or they have a zoning on their parcel, they're going to say, what does R-LD mean now? I had R4 before. And so that, that's why I bring that up to your attention. It's not that it's a hard process to do it, it just, it could add some confusion and complicate things if it's not rolled out properly. But that's why I bring that to your attention. But going back to your point, the drainage, again, the drainage and the grading ordinance, we just don't have it. And I can tell you from my experience with it is continues to be an issue for the city. And it's, it's not a good feeling to tell someone when they call you that you don't have a code to protect them or just to help them in that it's a civil matter, not a city issue. It's, it's not a fun thing to communicate to, to our residents. So it's something that, and this is things, this is something that we discussed as they were considering this, this proposed amendment. And so they were asked to try to share, shed some light and at least explain to you on how they would address drainage and grading for this particular development.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
Just to follow up to that, Bill. As the applicant talked about is they've had this design, the drainage is incorporated into the design, which it needs to be because of the, those are lot lines. But based on the ordinance, it says nothing about storm drainage, you know, how do we accommodate, you know, that, that, and that's my concern about the dimensional standards is it doesn't speak to any of that. And ultimately my concern is, is how do we have enough teeth that somebody else doesn't come in and just build this without actually doing their due diligence to make sure that, you know, they've, they've accommodated for a lot of this? Is, is there a way, I guess, that we can accommodate that and, and everything?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Yearsley. In a typical subdivision, so let me elaborate a little bit more on the code. There, there's, there are requirements in the code that says you need to retain drainage on your property, provide adequate area for drainage. That's all it says in code. And then in the subdivision ordinance, section of our ordinance, it speaks to providing utility and drainage easements along property boundaries to try to convey or capture that drainage. Beyond that, that's what we have in the UDC and then all of it, the rest of it falls to the building code, which I think the applicant, in my discussions with him, they were comfortable with just allowing the building code to, to speak to those requirements. As part of this amendment, if you look at note number three here in front of you, we asked the applicant to go to the county surveyor and see if we could just have some kind of blanket drainage easement across the developments and if that could suffice for their need, it's part of their development. And this is some of the language that they proposed. Keep in mind, as Laren pointed out in his testimony, I can't say 100%, but most of the time, these standards would apply for a private street and a private street is private drainage, right? It's not a public system. So they're going to have to design that entire development on a private drainage system because none of it's going to be public. But how that works, I'm not, I don't have the expertise to tell you how that works or what, what safeguards we need to put in place for that.
Well, and, and, you know, and I read that, that drainage unit, but you know, for me personally, as an engineer, trying to drain, if you're in the center of that property and trying to get water from there to where you want that to be conveyed to, that's a lot of slope that you're having to drop and you're having a lot of exposed concrete or it's, it's going to look really kind of funny without actually proper piping and, and associated with that, which this says nothing to that. And that's, that's my concern with what they're, what they're asking for is, is, I guess, I'm, I'm just struggling if, if, how to make sure we protect the public because, like I said, I, I live in a large subdivision and we see it all the time that, you know, we've got ponding as the two properties come together. It's kind of a low spot and water doesn't go anywhere. And so, you know, this can be a lot worse if someone just puts downspouts in the corner there and they have four downspouts coming in at one spot and all of a sudden you've got a mess. And so those are some of my concerns. And, and maybe, you know, personally, if we continue it, you know, for a little bit, allow the applicant to show what he's proposing, you know, in a larger scale than just the little map, I, I may have a better feel, may have a better comfort and we can maybe work out something that's more agreeable to everybody. I personally feel that these two applications should be separated because they're totally talking about two different items. And, and, you know, at this point, I would potentially, if, if I had more comfort on the dimensional standards, I would be more comfortable approving that and having maybe the naming convention come out as more of, as part of the comprehensive plan. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm leaning is, is I, I don't feel like I'm comfortable with both of these applications combined.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, right now they're married together, but we can certainly open up the public hearing and see if the applicant's willing to maybe see what's the more important issue for them. Is it getting the setbacks, the dimensional standards approved or the naming convention approved at this point? They have the ability to withdraw that request and you could continue the other portion to get more information and then they could go forward. I don't know if they have an appetite for that or not, or if that's something you want to entertain, but certainly you can have further discussions or just continue it all and we can get you some more answers too and then later date.
Well, in my personal opinion is, is we can deny the one and approve the other as part of our motion too. So we have those options and so my, 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 my thinking, my, you know, at least my thought process is, is maybe continue out to a certain point to allow the applicant to put together a presentation to, to show how this, in a more of a larger scale might work to get some level of comfort and maybe talk through that a little bit better. And then we can decide how we want to move forward at that point is, is my thought, at least on the dimensional standards. Because my opinion, my guess is he's trying to build something that he can't build right now because he doesn't have the, the correct dimensional standards for what he's wanting to build in, is my opinion, which, you know, if, if we can figure out some way to make that work, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
You know, the point that was made a little bit earlier too about adding in some language about private streets and common driveways might encourage some of those developments to continue moving forward. We might see more of those kind of applications. I don't know if there's something we can do to put in there that there's a case-by-case analysis on private driveways or, or private streets or common driveways, if that's something we could consider in the future. But I feel much more comfortable evaluating on a case-by-case basis with each project on what their merits are.
Commissioner Holland, you bring up a good point and I did want to go on the record just to let you know that typically in the code, common driveways aren't allowed or prohibited off of private streets. In this particular case, the applicant did receive alternative compliance, which is the case-by-case scenario that you're speaking to. And the director did approve of that. So yes, we have that latitude in code. So just because he's gotten it approved, again, the alternative compliance process is case-by-case whether or not it's in the best interest to do something like that. So I did want to just go on the record and let you know that it's not ideal to have common driveways off of private streets and the code doesn't, doesn't prohibit it unless you go through that alternative compliance process.
So Commissioner Holland, are, are you asking, is there a way, I think what you're saying is you'd like, you'd like a way for that to be filtered out before it get, the applicant has to go, come to us to say, we don't really like this overall design. Is, is there a way to start that a little bit earlier in their discussions with staff so that they're not, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's definitely part of it.
Okay. And that goes along with Commissioner Yearsley's comments about having teeth in a way to protect the public and without necessarily having to go through a PUD process.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, you know, every time we, we pre-app with applicants, so before it even gets in front of you, we're, we're letting them know if we like the design, if we can support what they're proposing. So, and if we can't, we tell them that and then tell them to come back. I can, the recent example that I can share with you was Rockberry Townhomes. I don't know how many versions we looked at that, but they came back multiple times and we finally landed on something that we could support. I think this commission did support this developer's applications when they came through. And the comp plan supports diversity in our community. I think even this, this residents of Meridian support housing diversity in our community, just not all the developments have to be the same and they have to be in the right and appropriate locations. So in my opinion, I think we do have flexibility already in the code to do it on a case-by-case basis, just based on what I testified on previously. So I don't, I don't think we need to add anything further, but we can certainly, if you need more comfort level than that, then I'm open to ideas or suggestions. Now it sounds like commission's leaning towards continuance to get more information.
So as far as the name changes, you were talking about whether we continue to get more information or whether we deny. And we could make a motion, I suppose, for one, you know, or recommendation to city council to recommend one and deny the other. But as far as the name changes go, it sounds like we're pretty much in agreement that we think that's best for the public understanding to roll that out after the comp plan or at the same time. And so then, I mean, we would, we would need to deny it because we don't know the timeframe of that.
And I'm, I'm good with that unless we're just thinking that to continue to, you know, we might, yeah, I think that's, I mean, that's where we want to go, I think. I mean, in terms of not undermining the process of the comp plan and the education of the comp plan and, and sort of, I, I think that that makes a lot of sense.
And I do too, but I, you know, I think, you know, I, you know, at this point, I don't know if we need to make a motion to deny. My thought was maybe let's dive into this a little better to make sure we feel like we understand at least the dimensional standards, at least at this point. And then maybe we can, in the motion, we can approve this portion and deny the next, you know? Or if the applicant wishes, he maybe can withdraw his, that portion of the application. So there, there are options without just a flat-out denial. Like I said, I don't, I don't feel comfortable moving this until I at least have a better feel of how this would actually look in, in, in a real kind of life environment. So I would be amenable to at least giving the applicant some time to, if he would, if he's interested to bring back some more information to try to show examples or, or how this would actually fit in a certain situation.
So Bill, oh, he's there.
Madam Chair, one more comment too. I think with the, the naming conventions, I'd almost feel better if we continued it to the point where the applicant could talk about it with the comprehensive plan committee and they could come up with a consensus on what they want those naming conventions to look like.
Okay. Bill, as far as, when, when we're making a motion on this, do we need to specifically go through each, each change that the applicant is proposing? I know we don't need to address each one, but, but if we have changes that need to be made, like say to, to number three, number four, we need to specifically go through in the motion and state those on each particular case, each particular issue? Or is it just a recommend, approval, denial, continuance?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is a little unusual circumstance because there's really no conditions, right, to amend or change?
Right.
You support staff's changes. If you don't, then you say you want that modification based on some of the ideas that you're having this evening.
Okay.
You don't have to go through each individual one and address that. Just address the things that you think you want, you want modified for, be corrected before it gets to council.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
If you're going to continue it, be specific as to why you're continuing and for what reasons.
Okay. And I, it sounds like we may need to reopen and ask the applicant if they're willing to continue if that, that motion is made.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I just asked the applicant, it sounds like he has a lot of the information that you requested already prepared. He feels he's confident he could have something for you for the November 1st hearing, if you would be willing to entertain that.
Okay. Commissioner Holland.
So looking at the second half of this application, the, the only thing I would want to spend some more time on and I'm leaning towards continuing to see what other cities have in their code on what they, what they put in there related to have in their code on what they, what they put in there related to private streets, common driveways, rear setbacks for their R-15 or their multifamily developments, just so we could kind of have something to compare apples to apples and see what other communities are doing. Maybe do a little bit more best practice research.
Commissioner Holland, is that something you would want the applicant to go do or are you suggesting the staff or we or everyone?
Great question. I think I'd like to see more information. I don't know, I'd be happy to do some research on my own, but if the applicant or staff had any recommendations there of what they've seen in other places, I'd be open to hearing that.
Okay.
I recommend that you direct staff and/or the applicant to do that research and bring it back because we're in a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Are we at the point where we're ready for a motion?
Well, I was just looking at this. If, if we, if we do ask staff to go look, I don't think the November 1st hearing date would actually be appropriate, you know? It's going to give them a very short window to actually go and look at the other staff or even the applicant to look at what the other, what entities are doing. And then also, there are five applications already on the November 1st, so maybe the November 15th might be a more appropriate window. I think that makes sense, particularly thinking there might be some public interest, I think, this time around, that we just want to make sure there's that room. So if, you, you actually had more interest in some other stuff, so if you wanted to make that motion, I would support that.
I gotta figure out how to say that motion. Would it be of our best interest to have the applicant put together more information about what other cities have done or should we have the staff research that for us?
I, I would actually think that might be something more appropriate for staff to give a more unbiased opinion of what other entities do. And then actually ask the applicant to provide more of a detailed situation in that respect. I think it might be a, a better way.
I agree.
And then what did we think, what did we decide on the first part of this? Do we want to continue the same conversation to that date? Maybe we've been the whole file number.
Well, it's, it's the entire file. So the big question is, is if we, we continue it only for this reason, we're not going to hear, you know, the intent is we wouldn't hear more testimony in regard to the naming convention is the only thing, you know? We'd be continuing only for the purpose of this portion of it, not the naming convention. And so unless there's something that, if you want to leave it open to allow public testimony on the naming convention, we could, you could add that in there as well, which would that open it to pretty much?
So one more question for staff or for Andrea here. If, in this motion, is it possible, since we've all kind of talked about postponing the change of naming to be more tied in with a comprehensive plan update, can we make that, that suggestion in this motion to continue that piece of it separate, and separate it out from this application or does it still need to stay combined? Makes sense what I'm asking?
Combined, yeah, that's what I'm thinking too, Bill.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission, it, it's one application at this point. We can't just bifurcate it now and move one piece ahead or continue a portion of it and then continue a piece of it.
The challenge with continuing is that, that gives the impression that the applicant can spend time with staff, come back with some name change ideas and then, then we're going to vote on that when really that's not what we're intending. The intention is to, to, to wait until a comprehensive plan is, or, I mean, the discussions can be had, but to really wait to make the final decision on the name changes until closer to when the, the comp plan is complete. So I don't, I don't know how to handle that from a timing standpoint.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, as I testified earlier, is your motion just has to say what you want to discuss on that hearing. So what I heard is you want staff to do more research on setbacks for R-15 developments or medium, high-density residential developments to have a comparison between what the applicant's proposing and what other jurisdictions are doing. And then you also want the applicant to show a bigger, a site plan showing how this works in a bigger context and how they're going to address the drainage.
Thanks, Bill. All right. With that, I move to continue file number H-2018-0091 to the hearing date of November 15th for the following reasons. That staff would come back with more detail on what other cities have done related to setbacks, specifically in R-15 or medium, high-density residential zones.
Commissioner Holland, I hate to interrupt, but we have to first move to open the hearing for the purpose of continuing and then give your motion.
And I think the file number is 59 instead of 91.
All right, sorry, it's written on, I'm reading off the wrong one, sorry, thank you for that correction.
Madam Chair, I move reopen the public hearing for file number H-2018-0059.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to reopen the public hearing for H-2018-0059 for the purpose of continuing the hearing until November 15th, 2018. All in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Holland.
I move to continue file number H-2018-0059 for the hearing date of November 15th for the following reasons. That we would ask staff to do some research and provide additional information on what best practices are around setbacks in R-15 and high-density residential developments and that the applicant would come forward with some additional information and site plans on how the proposed changes would look and appear and address that to the, to the commission. And we would only be opening up the public hearing for the second half of this application.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing for H-2018-0059 for the stated reasons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
barring no other comment, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn the public hearing for October 18th, 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. None opposed, motion carries.